How were our ratings this week? Did we have to do anything? Get our ratings, huh?
Ratings are up.
Do you want to make an announcement if anybody's here for Nine Fruit Street? We're not doing it. It's going to be in Denver, Denver, Thursday.
Good evening. Per the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are being audio and video recorded this evening. Amy, you just made a special request. If anyone is here for an 8:30 public hearing for Nine Fruit Street, the hearing has been or will be rescheduled. Do we have a date?
It will be re-advertised.
Be re-advertized. Okay, so if there's anyone here for Nine Fruit Street, we will not be conducting a hearing for that tonight. The first order of business is at 7:00 PM. It is now 7:05. Village at Norfolk. And we're going to hopefully wrap this up this evening. Dan, it's all yours.
Okay, so I think where we left it, we had a draft decision. There were some outstanding items that we had to discuss. I went back to the fire chief with three or four questions that have been answered, and his answers are now reflected as conditions in the decision. I also spoke with Bill McGrath about his perspective of where we stood with stormwater review. We also got a figure for the site clearing bond. Further in the decision, there's a condition that requires the applicant to post a bond or some kind of financial security. So I think we have all the outstanding issues answered. Whether or not they're resolved and if we have an agreement with the applicant, I'm not sure. But what I think we should do is go through the decision. We can stop at any section that people have questions about. Otherwise, what I would do is just hit the changes, make sure the board understands the changes, accept any comment from the applicant about the changes, and then just keep going through until we get to the end.
Okay, let's do it.
All right. So the first substantive change...
Chris, do you have a copy of this, Fisher?
Yes, I just received it.
Section B8. So one of the outstanding items, one of the action items from last time was understanding whether the beta had reviewed the stormwater system, the design, fully, whether or not there would be any lingering question about the design of the system and its compliance with the state's stormwater standards. And so I checked in with Bill. I talked to him this afternoon. And the reason we had this question is because, Chris, the applicant's attorney, took the position that there shouldn't be any subsequent peer review of the stormwater design after the permit's been issued because it's his perspective that that's already happened. And, you know, he's made the point in the past about how these plans are pretty far along. I mean, they're not probably fully engineered, but they're more detailed than what zoning boards may typically see in a 40B application, which are usually based upon preliminary plans. And so I agree with all that. But it's still, it's always been my practice that there would be a final set of plans, civil design plans, to be reviewed by the consulting engineer for consistency with the decision itself, consistency with the prior iteration of the plans, but also to review any outstanding questions or issues with respect to any design element. And in my experience, the stormwater design is never really finalized until construction drawings are created. And so I have a standard condition that the zoning board would have its peer review consultant review the final construction plans for compliance with the stormwater standards, which is really the best way to judge, you know, a project like this. It's a very predictable, simple set of standards that have been well-established, and there's a lot of precedent that's evolved under them. And I think the applicant said that they're complying with the standards, so I don't think there's a disagreement with that.
Actually, no. There is a disagreement with that. There are a few other disagreements. I'll let you finish, but I just wanted to correct that one statement.
All right. That's news to me. I guess we should understand where the disagreements are with the standards. But before we get to that, the point here is that we usually have a post-permit review of stormwater to make sure that things are what we expect them to be. And so Bill told me this afternoon that he's reviewed the system, that he would still expect there to be construction drawings, and that he would still want to review those drawings to ensure that the system is properly designed and in compliance with the stormwater standards as we expected them to be. And so that is what B8 reflects, and I guess the applicant may have a different view, so.
Yeah, thank you. And again, good evening, everyone. Christopher Agassino, counsel for the Village at Norfolk. When we left on November 9th, Dan was tasked with producing a final permit that was consistent with our discussions on November 9th. And this is one of the issues that I thought we had resolved and discussed at length, is that in this instance, this particular set of plans referenced in this particular permit has been fully designed. It is a final, fully engineered, designed project. I got the revised permit at about, I got one draft at 4:00 this afternoon, and I got another draft at 5:00 this afternoon. And this section B8 appeared for the first time, which I believe is inconsistent with what we had discussed at the last hearing regarding the level of design in these plans. I immediately followed up with an email to Bill McGrath, and Bill's email response to me at 5:22 PM is more consistent with my understanding of what will happen, which was reflected in the previous draft, which is not reflected there in B8, is that the final quote-unquote "construction set" will be submitted merely to ensure, in Bill's words, "conformance with the approval." And he said, "This is not a design peer review." There is no further design peer review that's going to occur. So there is already language in the original draft outside of this B8 that talks about submission of a final set with all of the technical data simply to ensure consistency with the approval. So this idea that there's going to be further review for compliance with, and we'll get to it in a second, the stormwater management regs, that's not what we discussed. It's inconsistent with what we discussed on November 9th. I actually went back to the videotape. It's at minute 12, and we went into a whole discussion about, "These plans are final." So I'd asked that this section 8 be struck. Moreover, section 8 references the stormwater management regulations. We had an exchange at a hearing that there are no wetlands on-site. So the stormwater management facility for this project is not subject to the stormwater management regulations. So we went through the whole discussion about how mounding is required and the mounding analysis is required in the stormwater management regs. We did not fully comply with the stormwater management regs. However, Bill reviewed mounding for conflicts between specific facilities, the septic systems, off-site characteristics. So we had that exchange. So that's one disconnect, is that the reference to the stormwater management regs is not correct. And then the other disconnect is, in this particular instance, the statement should just read exactly what's said in Bill's email, which is already in this permit, is that it's simply to ensure consistency with what's been submitted to date. That's it. So I think the answer is, we don't need to see this B8, which I saw for the first time as I was jumping in the car to come here tonight.
You know, it was my understanding all along that your engineers told us that this system was designed in conformity with the stormwater standards. And the reason that's important is that Norfolk has stormwater bylaws and standards, which essentially mirror the state standards, and we're waiving those. But it was our understanding that you're complying with the state standards. We didn't push on the Cornell data. We accepted the TP, whatever it is, 52 data. But maybe I'm wrong, and if other folks have different memories of it. It was my understanding that this was in compliance with the 10 standards, and if it's not, I guess, why isn't it? In what areas isn't it, isn't it?
We had a hearing on this, and I think Mr. Howe remembers the exchange because he raised this very question. He said, "Well, you have to comply with the stormwater management regs." And I described, "Well, there are no wetlands on-site. In order to make this project work, all right, with this density and these separations and the stormwater management facilities and the Board of Health, septic system facilities, within the proximity that we've proposed," the only waiver was, the only waiver from the stormwater management regs was relative to mounding on every single stormwater basin, because we're doing recharge on-site. So we already had an exchange about this. I'm surprised that, you know, this is coming up again now.
You guys have any memory of this?
Devin, do you remember? I don't. Do you?
I remember talking about the mounding analysis and everything. I guess I don't understand why we would need a whole second peer review of something that's already been peer reviewed.
Oh, it's not. It's not a peer review. It's for Bill to have the opportunity to review the construction drawings to make sure that nothing's changed. If there's anything new in those construction drawings that alter the pipe sizing or the size of the basins or the infiltration calculations, then he has to review those to see if they actually comply with the standards, standard number two, peak and pre- and post-runoff rates, you know, TSS removals.
From what I've understood, is that the plans that we have are going to be the final plans. To do further review on that would just, it would almost seem redundant.
Again, the statement's correct. If we change something, absolutely. If something changes, absolutely. But everything, the inverts, the separations, everything's been designed and reviewed by Bill. Bill's email that came in in response to my question says it all. There is no further design peer review. He's not expecting an additional design peer review. That's from Bill.
So what if there was a change? Is that what we're trying to do here? If something was to change, it would have to be reviewed?
I have yet to see a 40B project, and doing this for 10 years, that the design of the stormwater system hasn't changed. I mean, it's just not...
I'd yet to see a 40B project where the applicant spent $500,000 in engineering before receiving a comprehensive permit.
Okay. Most projects I work with do do that, so it's, it's different.
Let me ask a question. As in fact, as their stormwater final analysis, they decide to go from a X eight-inch pipe to a six-inch pipe. What's the process?
We'd have to submit that for review. Bill would look at it and say, "Hey, this pipe changed. Show me why it changed." And in that instance, Bill would look at it and say, "I need to review to make sure this is still consistent with the approval." But we've already engineered all those pipes. Usually, the size of the pipes is not fully engineered. The inverts aren't usually engineered. We've done all the detail, which is why we gave the board such a hard time when we had to move little things around, because the actual sizing of the pipe, the location, everything was already engineered.
Whatever it is that Mr. Hill is proposing to be reviewed, let's review it now. The plans are final. They're not going to be changed. Whatever it is that needs to be reviewed, review it. It's been reviewed to death. Whatever, nothing's going to change. If we do change, I could see having to come back and having to re-review, but there's nothing that's going to change.
Can I just ask a question, though, guys? I mean, in your waiver requests, you've stated that the site plans submitted for approval include a preliminary drainage and stormwater management design. The preliminary design has been reviewed for consistency with applicable regulations and standard engineering practices. Why do you keep saying preliminary if they're final?
Frankly, we could delete that if we're going to talk details. You and I actually had a discussion about just the different terminology. We can delete...
Mr. Hill, listen, please. You're making those faces. You people do whatever you want. The project right now, as it stands, is very economically marginal. You make any decisions you want and move forward. But I've had it with all the changes and all the conditions. There is no more room for me to play, to maneuver. I don't mean play, to maneuver. So you do whatever you think is appropriate, and then I have to do whatever that feels appropriate for the project.
I guess I just don't understand. If the design isn't going to change, then what's the problem with having a condition that Bill reviews the plans? If there's nothing to review, there's nothing to review.
He's already reviewed the plans. He's already reviewed them for what you're describing.
If you show him a set of plans that says there's no changes whatsoever in the drainage design, then there's nothing for him to review. Then why are we even having this discussion?
Yeah. I think I'll agree with Dan. If Bill's reviewed this plan, and I think you agree, he has reviewed this plan. He's accepted this plan. This is just, I hate to say it, it's fit belts and suspenders. I don't see, based on your email and what Bill has told Dan, that this is going to change at all. And if you look at it, it basically says, obtaining an opinion from the ZBA consulting engineer, Bill, he's given you an opinion, he's given Dan an opinion, it's the same opinion. And then it goes on to B9 to say that the final sheets shall be signed by the professional survey of the registered engineer, which again will be Bill.
B9's fine. B9's fine. We're fine with B9.
And then B8 and I think B9 are pretty consistent.
No, no, no. Totally different issues. B9 says we need an opinion that the fully engineered stormwater management system is in conformance with the state stormwater management standards. Number one, we already spent an entire hearing talking about the small deviations from the SMR. We already went through this, okay, about, number one, we can't give you that opinion, because it doesn't, because the site is not subject to it, because there are no wetlands on-site. So that opinion doesn't exist. All right? Number two, okay, you're presuming that by saying that the applicant's fully engineered stormwater management system, the system is fully engineered. The plans are fully engineered. All right? Now, if this read, all right, "The ZBA's approval of the final plans shall be contingent upon the applicant obtaining an opinion from the ZBA's consulting engineer that the construction, or that the final plans, which we've defined above, actually, is defined somewhere, that the final plans are consistent with, that the stormwater management system shown in the final plans are consistent with the stormwater management system shown in the approved plans. Then that's satisfactory."
So in other words, the last line, basically, we're going to change to reflect that it's consistent with what is in the final plan that was submitted.
Correct.
Fine. I think we can live with that, Dan.
And I apologize, you know, to sound a little frustrated and curt on it, but I did just receive this at 5:00. You know, I'd hoped that...
Well, this was an open issue, and I had to follow up with the fire chief, Bill McGrath, water department. There was a couple remaining issues. I gave you a draft of this on Thursday, Friday of last week.
Not with this language.
No, no. You're right. This specific condition is new.
It's a biggie.
But it was, it's a biggie, but it was one of the remaining lingering things that we had to get confirmation on.
All right.
We got this.
Settled?
Yes.
Let's move ahead.
So I'm going to change the language of that.
Aside from that, I only have one more.
Good.
It's another biggie, but you only get one per night.
One biggie a night.
All right. You're okay with number nine, B9?
Yes.
Yes, that should be fine.
And then B10, I added a clause there that if you're not submitting a stormwater prevention plan, that the details will be just filed with the board. That's fine. At the last meeting, we agreed that we'd attach just one sheet to the decision that's going to get recorded at the registry. So that's B14. Section C3, I just clarified that what you're complying with, we have language in there that you have to comply with any bylaws that aren't waived. And just to be clear, we're talking about bylaws that are in effect as of the date of your application. So if there was a bylaw that was adopted, say, last month, I mean, this is just mirroring state law. The state law says that you are required to comply with bylaws that are in effect as of the date of the application.
You're actually helping us on that one, Dan. Thank you.
Don't get too excited. Actually, do we have the date? Do you have the exact date, Amy, by any chance? It was November something, 2016.
What is it you're looking for?
The date of the application, the date that it was filed with the zoning board.
Oh, sure. I have that.
Because he needs to put that in.
So while you're looking for that, just scrolling down. Section E7 is that blasting section that we put in. We talked about that last time. Section F1.
Do you want to get rid of that question on E8?
Yeah, I just deleted it.
You deleted it? Okay.
Section F1, I checked with the fire chief as to what he meant with fire lanes, and basically, we just deferred this to after the permit's been issued, and they propose a plan to the fire chief. And the fire chief will have final sign-off on what kind of signage markings are required. And that's fine with you, Chris? F1?
Yep.
As far as when this was filed?
Yep.
You said November?
Yeah.
I have February of '17.
Oh, really? Do you have the application filing date?
No, it was in, it was 2016.
The hearing might have started in February.
No, the hearing started March 22nd.
How many sections do we get?
Oh, maybe because there was a, next day it's not authorized. Okay, let me put the...
We just have to give Dan the filing date.
Yeah, we can.
We'll get you that date, Dan.
All right. F4. So the fire chief says that 10 feet of separation between the structures is the minimum required under state law. I think in the past, I've put in 15 feet because other fire chiefs... I think in the past, I've put in fifteen feet because other fire chiefs around the state have wanted to expand that a little bit. Uh, but, but this fire chief was fine with ten, provided that there's no obstructions in the way. So the point here is that there can't be a deck or, um, an overhang. In other words, if you're carrying a ladder, there can't be a, a balcony of some sort. So that's, that's the language I put in. Um, do you have a, is there an issue with obstructions?
Yes. Um, so we, we talked about this at the last hearing. Bisher agreed, structures being the buildings, no closer to ten feet, no closer than ten feet. The plan as shown and approved shows bulkheads leading to basements, patios, some decks in places, just, uh, projections coming out of buildings that are within that ten-foot limit. The, the fire department, the fire chief has seen the plan, reviewed the plan, understands the plan, and haven't heard anything about obstructions within that ten-foot buffer being a problem. If you look at the plan-
You have his memo that, from last week?
I, I don't have a memo from last week.
Okay.
I mean, if I missed it, I apologize, but I, I don't recall seeing a memo from last week. The plan as shown includes things like bulkheads, patios, within that ten feet.
It's within the ten feet, not within the fifty?
Yeah, the, the patios, I mean, if we could put the plan up.
Which is right now, in case in boys and any other, uh, subject, you cannot have, not have a patio. They're, they're designed to have a patio in between the two units. If you don't have a patio, so you have just a clear land, you're basically telling, telling me.
Do the patios have parapet walls on them? Are they flat? Yeah, so there's no, I think the issue here is parapets. In other words, any kind of vertical obstruction that's going to cause a firefighter to trip with a ladder between buildings.
Correct. I mean, I assume there may in some cases be, you know, a step up.
Okay. Let me clarify something. The, the issue about ten feet is not so that a firefighter can go in or, or a fire truck can go in, because the access is clearly from the front and the back. The issue about ten feet is having combustible material within ten feet. So a, a, a bulkhead, for example, which is not combustible, can be within that ten-feet, uh, distance. That's, that's the issue, and, and please check with, talk with the chief. But the, the point is, if, if that condition is, stays in place, it's an effective denial of the project. It's not going to happen, because we have to have bulkheads, which is an access to the basement, and those bulkheads will be within those ten feet.
I think what we've got to do is have the chief, because it's obviously state law. It's not a local bylaw. We should probably check with the chief and get the state law wording, unless you have it already.
Well, I think, you know, one, one way to resolve this tonight would be simply to say that, um, that, um, said area shall be free of obstructions and the, and that this, this provision shall be enforced by the fire chief under the state, under the state fire prevention code. And it's like, I mean, if you, I, I'm just-
About combustible obstructions or combustible structures?
I don't think we should get in there. This is truly state law, and I'm just, I'm just going back best, based on what I thought the chief said. And, you know, he said that, uh, it should be emphasized that, that the separation distance between dwelling units does, does relate to all appurtenances, i.e. porches, balconies, or other overhanging. So I, my understanding was that he meant any, any obstructions, and so that's why I used-
State law enforced by the fire chief should be fine.
Well, it's just, it, it may pose a problem for the zoning enforcement officer if we say any structure, because now, if, if, like, if the patio is a structure, it's, it's, uh.
I mean, what you're, sorry. What you were just describing are combustible structures, so decks, overhangs, balconies, yes, we can agree to not have those. I, I think I misspoke when I said decks are in that area. I, I double-checked with the engineer this afternoon. It's the bulkheads and the patios are within that area. Bulkhead's not combustible, and a patio's not combustible.
Let me, let me do this. Let, let's take out the word patios, because I'm not sure about that. Patios are generally flush with the ground, so that, that may not be an obstruction. I, I don't want to-
How about bulkhead and metal, metal cover on bulkhead?
How about we go back to what you said before and use the state, the state language?
I, I think I'd rather just defer to the chief.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really between you and the chief.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would too, but just, let's not say free of any structures.
No, it's obstructions, not structures.
Okay, obstructions.
It's, the, the language is, the said area shall be free of obstructions.
I forgot to use the mic. Sorry about that.
So, so the sentence can say that the said area shall be free of, free of obstructions, such as balconies, overhangs, et cetera. This condition shall be enforced by the fire chief under the state prevention code.
That should be fine.
Or maybe don't even include balconies. Just say free of obstructions per the state.
Sure.
That way you, you avoid any kind of reference to anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just worried. Yep, it's fine. I mean, if we have to come back here, we can go to the videotape. I think we know the intent.
Okay.
So I'm going to take out the balconies and overhang language. I'm just going to say free of obstructions. Period. Okay?
And then you're going to add, you know, fire department, fire chief?
Can we just clarify one thing, just so, the building commissioner is here, so he knows in the future. Does a bulkhead qualify as an obstruction or not?
So I think that's the fire chief's call, right? It's not ours.
Well, we're permitting, well, hold on. It is actually, in this meeting tonight.
In this meeting tonight, the board is wearing the hat of the local fire prevention officer or, or chief of the fire department.
But we cannot violate state law.
Well, hold on, hold on. I-
I don't mind, because I, I talked to the chief, and I know exactly what he wants. I don't mind you leaving it in the hands of the chief. I'm, I'm okay with that. But I do mind, in the decision saying, no obstructions, that, that some, some, uh, zoning enforcement officer may interpret as, oh, wait a minute, this is an obstruction. I cannot, I cannot allow it. So just clarify. That's all I'm saying. If, if you want that, that particular item to be enforced by the fire chief, I'm, I'm okay with that. I've talked to him. He's-
I have a suggestion. Let's, let's change it. Said area shall be free, free of obstructions, as shall be enforced by the fire chief under the state fire prevention code. Okay? That's why I get paid the big bucks. Okay, next, all right, F six. This is the driveway thing. I don't, I don't remember where the twenty-two foot came from. I, I went back to the tape. I tried to figure out where, where this language came from. We, we had a condition in here that the driveways have to be a minimum length of twenty-two feet. We had some discussion on October eighteenth on driveway lengths. The concern was, some of his driveways are eighteen feet, nineteen feet, and what if you, what if a guy had a big pickup truck with an extended cab, and he parks in the driveway? There's not really much room to go around it or behind it without hitting the garage or walking into the street. So I think that nineteen feet is probably okay. That is your standard in the zoning bylaw for parking lots. There isn't a standard for driveways and houses, from what I can tell. So they're asking for nineteen feet, except as shown in the plan, because there are some at eighteen feet, and they've shown that on the most current site layout plan. So I guess it's, it's your judgment call, so if you're, if you're okay with some of these driveways being eighteen feet. And I talked to Bill about this this afternoon, and I guess we're just wondering, why couldn't you comply with, with twenty? I mean, is it, it looked to me like you could easily shift these buildings back a couple of feet.
That's how you designed the plan.
Nope, Bisher. No, it's-
This is it, man. This is the plan. Approve it or deny it. This is the plan. Eighteen or nineteen or fifty. This is it.
Why can't you push it back?
Because I can't, I don't know why, but every single, every single spot has been engineered to that, to its maximum.
All right, we're, we're fine with that.
I think we, I think we agree to that. I think twenty-two is twenty-two DPW. Is that a, Bob, do you know offhand there was a?
Nineteen is the only one that I know.
Yeah, yeah, I think we approved the nineteen, so. And there was some issues with some of them were eighteen, I think, as you got down towards the cul-de-sac. What was going to be a cul-de-sac at one point?
And we did agree on a couple eighteen's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
So are you okay with this?
It's okay with nineteen.
Yep.
Sorry. Um, which, which section, Dan? I apologize.
Uh, F six.
F six. So you're going to strike to twenty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. Yep. That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, and then the hydrants will be, as shown on the plan?
Yep.
We had, added the condition F nine to require that the sidewalk be constructed prior to the first occupancy permit. We talked about, we talked about that at the last hearing.
Yep.
Moving ahead to G four. The, the applicant's position was that this bond should be paid prior to site clearing activities, which may not necessarily occur at the same time as the zoning boards review the final plans. So that, I struck out that. It seemed reasonable to me that the bond would be posted at the time of the construction activities. So I struck out that clause, and then the, um, Bill advised that twenty-five thousand would be an appropriate amount for this kind of surety. It seemed reasonable to me. So if you want, I can add that language in right here, right now. Uh, we, we said the surety would be an amount approved by, by the consulting engineer, but I, I can plug in a number. You'd like that, so is that, you guys okay with that?
Yep, I think we are. Okay.
And the released language is, released by the board upon completion of the roadway and all other infrastructure? What?
Sorry, Chris, what was the question?
The release of, of that bond should be upon the determination of the bond of, to complete the road, and it'll be merged into that, right? Because once, once we started the, the construction of the roadway, that, that's to assure the town that if, if we abandon the project while we are doing work, there is some coverage for it. But once, once the roadway is com- not, is far enough where we post a bond for the completion of the road,
Yep.
that, that bond should be merged into this bond, so credited to that bond.
I, I agree with that. So you want to say, either upon completion of the roadway or, or the posting of a bond for completion of the roadway? Is that all right?
It's good.
All right. Uh, H four, we just cleaned that up a little bit. And that's it for the main body of the decision, and then the waivers. I think we should just fly, fly through these pretty quick if we can. So I, you know, I just went back, Chris, and, and looked at tape to make sure all my notes were accurate, and, um, you know, the first couple pages, these are all approved. Now on this one about stormwater, um.
What number is that, Dan?
It's number eight. So I, I guess we're going to take out the provided, the provided clause.
Yeah, that, okay.
And then that's going to be the same for a few more of these. Number ten, my notes show that this was denied because it's not necessary, because you're not going to discharge any runoff. That was my, that's what my notes showed as, as the outcome of that discussion. Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
Correct.
Uh, eleven. Granted, but your, your, your driveway's going to be twenty-two feet.
Nineteen? Nineteen.
Nineteen?
No, no, no. This is width of the, uh, pavement.
Oh, okay. It was a twenty-two, yep.
Roadway, really, not driveway.
I thought for-
I would, I would actually change driveway, Dan, because we, I think you changed that in another location for consistency.
Dan, for, for ten, I thought, I thought there was discharge off the site.
No.
Was that changed? It was changed, right?
When, when, when the overflow pipes were added, I thought there could have been discharge off the site.
He added an emergency.
Yeah, it's an emergency overflow, but it's not.
They're not relying on it. So you want to change driveway to roadway?
Roadway, yeah, that makes sense.
Do the same for number twelve?
Uh, number fourteen, is that okay with you guys?
Uh, Jim Pavlik's not here to weigh in, but I'd imagine that's, that's standard.
I mean, that's what we agreed to, and I, I just put in the CAD thing, because I think he agreed to provide that in CAD, so.
At the end.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Sixteen, I think you agreed to do the-
Curbing on the inlets, yep.
No, seventeen, you agreed to do all field, uh, masonry walls. Is that right?
Um, it was, wasn't it on all walls visible from Rockwood?
Right.
There's a condition that addresses this. It's a condition. And, and we actually called out the specific walls. They're shown which ones are going to be fieldstone on the plan. It's, uh, condition B four, page five of seventeen. Fieldstones shall be used to construct any walls visible from Rockwood Road. And I think we actually called out some additional walls, uh, visible from neighboring properties that will have fieldstone as well.
You did add, you did add some.
Right.
Heather requested Mr. Weider.
Yes.
Fieldstone per the, per the plans. The plan, he did show where he was going to put the fieldstone, did it not?
Yes.
Are those now reflected on the plan?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I think there were about five locations, because there was the back wall also.
So, yeah, I think in that seventeen, Dan, just per the plan, or per condition, well, yeah, per the plan. Because I think the plan goes above condition B four.
All right, I'm going to say, um, granted. But see condition B four.
See the, see the, see the final plan.
And, and walls shall be constructed in accordance with the, the current plans.
Correct. Yep.
Because it does show. I think it's, I think it's the wall that faces the housing project.
Right.
That is more ready rock. Most of the rest of them are all fieldstone.
All right. For nineteen, I, I think we agreed to waive it, but that we wanted you to minimize the, the export of topsoil.
That's fine, to extent possible is fine.
Is that right?
Yep.
Yes.
And twenty-four, you wanted that eight-yard, eight-foot yard setback for that one garage unit, and that was the only one that you needed it for, so I just limited that waiver to that one building.
That should be fine.
Twenty-five, do I take out the provided language? Thirty-one, same thing. Thirty-four, um. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Uh, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, it's all boilerplate. Forty-one. Uh, forty-three is, relates again back to that setback issue. Uh, forty-four, I think you withdrew.
Hold on, sorry, Dan.
Yep.
What are you referencing in thirty-seven and forty-one, subject to the ZBA's decision on waiver from the planning boards regulation step forward? Where, what are you referencing? It's just-
Under the subdivision rules and regs, a lot of these conditions appear here twice, because under Norfolk subdivision rules and regs, there are actually the subdivision rules and regs and site plan rules and regs, and, and there's a lot of duplication, so you've asked for waivers from some sections that appear basically twice. And so what I'm saying here is that we're waiving these, but see how we decided this issue above. For example, for project driveways and parking areas, for number thirty-six, we dealt with that above. And so I'm just saying it.
Was it granted above?
Yeah, granted, except that you had to have a minimum length of 19 feet and you had to have a travel lane of 22 feet.
That should be fine.
Forty-four, my notes said that you withdrew that, is that right?
Right, correct.
And then for the Board of Health sewage regulations, that was one of the outstanding issues. We ran that by Wade Sossier and he didn't think it was necessary to waive the groundwater level determinations and recommended, recommended that that be denied. I don't think the board really discussed that. I don't think we had a discussion about it ourselves, but that just says that it has to be done during that, during that period of December through April. And it's, is that an issue, or?
Yes, we're relying on the, the data that we have already. So whenever that data was collected, is the proper date. So I, I wouldn't see why this is denied. And I, I think, I'd like, I'd like to think the ZBA could maybe make a decision on this
Are you doing one big package subject system? Is that?
No, there, it's in several places.
Six of them? And how long ago did you do your, your?
They're all called out in the plans. They, they were all witnessed, approved. We had a, we had an extensive discussion about, discussion about modeling at one of the hearings. We went through this issue, as I recall. So, and I, I thought we talked about granting this waiver.
Now, we deferred this because we said we'd want to get Wade's input. Wade, Wade, Wade in, in March. Bill deferred these specific requests to, to the Board of Health. And then we went back to Wade and got, got a letter from him from.
Recently.
Is it, well, it's in October, I thought.
Yes. Yes, you're correct.
Do you have that, Amy, by any chance?
I don't think he had an issue, is what I recall.
He, he had an issue with this specific one.
Did he? What's Wade want us to do?
Deny the waiver.
If we deny the waiver, what's that force them to do? To do the testing all over?
I don't know when the testing was done. You're saying it was done outside that window of time?
Some of it, maybe. I mean, you could see the soil logs on the plans. They've all, they were all reviewed, approved. I'm not even sure why we're talking about this at this point.
Wade probably should have weighed in on this a lot sooner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, we're not going to beat this one to death. We've had extensive conversations about this at the time. They complied. Do you have it, Amy?
He says that, he says the, the majority of the deep observation holes and groundwater determinations has been done between the month specified by the local regulation. So to waive this section would not make sense.
So he's saying it has been done.
What would that mean if it's denied, if it's determined that one was done prior to or after those dates, that that would have to be redone?
Or we'd have to have monitoring, Wilson.
There is still a Title V permitting process. The Board of Health is going to review these applications under Title V, and the board does have a fair amount of leeway under Title V to require data to back up what projects propose. So I, I would feel comfortable advising you to, you could waive this section, knowing what I know about this process and what's been submitted so far. Okay. Is that all right? The, number forty-nine, it's, it's really not applicable because this is basically a provision that, that says the Board of Health can issue variances from its, from its regulations. They don't need variances from the regs because they're asking for waivers from the regs. So it's, it's not really.
Well, why isn't it granted as not applicable, just so that there's no confusion? I, I don't want any instance where the Board of Health suggests that we have to go through another additional local permitting process over and above the state, the state Title V process. So I, I think I'd rather see it granted, given that we've gone through the process.
Can we do granted as inapplicable?
That doesn't make sense.
Well, actually, Dan, we had a discussion about, this falls into the bucket of procedural local bylaws that are subsumed within the 40B process. In many, in other instances, we've granted waivers for, for similar procedural requirements, design review board, those types of things. This would fall under that same bucket. So actually, to stay consistent with the other waivers, it would be granted as inapplicable.
It's apples and oranges. We're granting waivers from procedural requirements that require you to file plans. This is saying that, that, that if you can't comply with the regulation, that you would need a variance from the Board of Health. And by waiving that, we'd say, no, you wouldn't need a variance from the Board of Health. And that's not, that's not the right process. The process is that you need a waiver from us. So that, that's what I tried to say here, is that it's, it's inapplicable because we're stepping in the shoes of the Board of Health. And if you need, if you're not, if you're not going to comply with a Board of Health reg, you get a waiver from us. I don't think this hurts you.
I, variance procedures administered by the, it needs to be granted. It doesn't make sense not to grant it. I think Mr. White had, had the right sense on this one. Granted as inapplicable.
Mr. Who?
Me. But if you read it, Chris, it, it, it basically says we have, you will come back to the ZBA.
Which is correct.
So that's fine, so it should be fine. I'd leave it just as it is, because it says you'll come back to us. You won't go to the Board of Health.
Would you feel better if I said no action?
Yeah, actually.
It, it's all semantics, it doesn't matter. But if you want to put no action, we'll put that.
Let's do that.
Let's do that.
All right, I think, yeah, that last one, fifty-three, I, I, that might be a typo. That seems to be out of place and I, I couldn't figure out what that referred to.
Not waving.
Well, I mean, what is the, are we waiving fees relative to the units, relative to the affordable units? I don't know what the section was, but if there's a section regarding municipal fees, the only question before the board is, are we waiving fees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Fees from what, though? I mean, building permit and application fees or what?
Applicable fees to the.
Water connection permit, I mean.
Yeah, certificate of occupancy, application fees. Have we done this for the affordable units in the past? No?
How was this treated in the other 40B?
Apparently, we didn't waive them in the past, so we're, we're fine with not waiving them here.
Okay.
So strike it.
I'm just going to delete it, delete the whole thing.
Okay.
All right? All right, so I think we're at the point where the board could entertain a motion to approve the written decision as modified tonight. And we'll put this in a final form. In fact, if Amy, I don't know if you can print it here, you could sign it tonight.
I'd still just, I'd like to see a clean copy. And we can do similar to what we did last time. You know, approve the final version of the decision, consistent with the deliberations tonight, to be prepared by the ZBA secretary for execution.
So you want to continue the hearing till the next?
No, no, you, you don't have to sign it during a hearing. You can all show up in the zoning board's office and then it gets filed in the town clerk's office whenever, whenever it's signed. So we don't need to have another hearing on it.
Okay.
Just gets, just gets prepared and signed.
Okay, so we need a motion for?
To accept it.
To accept.
So I make a motion to accept the decision of the application of the Village of Norfolk LSC for the comprehensive permit under general law 40B 20-23, dated December 6, 2017, as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Five zero.
Yeah, I did.
Do we have to make, Dan, do we have to make a motion? We've already made a motion to grant, so we can just accept, we're just accepting the comprehensive permit, correct?
That's it.
Okay.
Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, thank the board for their time on this one. I think we ended up where we wanted to be with a solid project here, so look forward to moving on. Thank you.
Go make some money.
Make back that money. You spent a lot on this one.
Okay, all right. Our second public hearing tonight is 144 Seaconk Street. It's a continuation of the hearing regarding the appeal. Who's here for?
Ted.
This microphone is closer to you.
Okay. We're not saying much.
We're good listeners. And they're still continuing. This shouldn't happen. I don't know if there's a chance we look at this yet. I've got this before.
Okay.
We're having to weigh in on this.
Is this on right now? Is this what's going to be discussed right now?
No, I don't know. We wanted to postpone the hearing until we had peer review done of what they're coming with. They, they did an analysis for us of what has been disturbed. Their engineer did, and we wanted to have that peer reviewed.
Right.
And the peer review just went out to.
Pat?
Pat, today. So I'm not sure what we're going to discuss today. I'll find out.
Okay. Do you want me to sit down?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Still, you're paying the big bucks.
It's going to be your baby.
I don't know if you want to curiously see this place here for nine fruit street.
Okay, that's a good point. Is anyone here tonight for the Nine Fruit Street hearing? Okay, that has been, or will be, read, re-advertised. The butters will be notified. Thank you. Ted, is Steve doing a presentation of his findings tonight? Is that the main purpose of us getting together?
Exactly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. The peer review just went out, I think, today. So we don't have any peer review done on, on your analysis. That will be done hopefully in the next week or so. Hey, whenever you're ready.
Tony, just.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hello? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You, you did mention that you don't have any comments, and although Mr. Hart did deliver a check to the board, in all truthfulness, it was delivered with some reservation and under protest. We're really not sure what, what would be reviewed. And, you know, we, we do remain confident, as we were at the last meeting, that Mr. Hart did not violate the bylaw. In fact, we're more confident of that. And the reasons for that are set forth in my letter to the board, which included, you know, present all of the evidence and reasons why Mr. Hart did not violate the bylaw. And as I said at the last meeting, you know, if you've had an opportunity to consider this and perhaps check with town council, the procedure, as you know, is that the building inspector, as his, his, you know, duty and prerogative, issued a notice of violation to Mr. Hart. And Mr. Hart appealed that decision. And in the context of that appeal procedurally, it's the board or the building inspector's obligation to show that Mr. Hart violated the bylaw. And it's Mr. Hart's, O-Hart, pardon me, right to present any countervailing evidence of why he didn't violate the bylaw. Now, I think from our perspective, there really hasn't been any evidence presented to the board of exactly how and why Mr. O-Hart violated the bylaw. There is the assertion that he did so, but there's no evidence. And your job in this situation, unlike other applications for, say, a special permit or a variance or a comprehensive permit, where you're given everything by the applicant and you're charged with applying the bylaw to it, in this situation, you sit as judge and jury, and your job is to weigh evidence. And again, in our view, you've received scant or no evidence from the building inspector as to why Mr. O-Hart violated the bylaw. On the other hand, from the applicant, from the appellant, Mr. O-Hart, you've received evidence that he didn't violate the bylaw in the form of an affidavit from his engineer that says that the testing was consistent with the bylaw, meaning it was that testing which was necessary to design the project. You've also now received a plan, which I think you'll agree depicts in red, and if you sort of cast your eye over it, you'll see that it, it shows in red a relatively small portion of the site that was altered. It depicts what we have said all along is the case, that there was really no, you know, jumpstart on road building, which has been asserted. Mr. O-Hart stayed away from sensitive areas like wetlands. He did travel to some of the more remote portions of the site, including the southern, southernmost portion of the site, which if you look at the comprehensive permit application, is in fact the location of the proposed wastewater treatment plant. And as we've said all along, and as Mr. O'Connell confirms in his affidavit, it is, was necessary to do this testing to characterize the soils, to determine the depth of groundwater, to determine the depth to bedrock for the purpose of designing roadways, siting structures, and for designing the wastewater treatment system. And further, there is the need to conduct further testing of the soils specifically for the wastewater treatment system. And it was for that reason why, in part, Mr. O-Hart did leave a, a pathway to that more remote portion of the site. So from our perspective, we think that you have, unless you're going to receive more information from the, from the building inspector and from the town, we think that you have all the information and evidence that's going to be presented to you. So we believe that you are in a position to render a judgment, again, sitting as judge and jury. And in our view, if you weigh the evidence that's been presented to you, we think that it compels a finding that Mr. O-Hart did not violate the bylaw. And we would. it compels a finding that Mr. O-Hart did not violate the bylaw, and we would respectfully request or renew our request that you so find.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, can I just, since I heard that there was no evidence, I took the pictures that I had taken that day. I just copied some of them, just for those that weren't able to go out and do the field walk to show exactly what was done out at the site. The first picture kind of depicts what you would normally find doing testing on a site, and the balance of the pictures are basically areas that were gravelled in, creating essentially a roadway going in, which I feel violates the bylaw. So I just wanted to add that to you, if you want to pass those around.
I just saw them. And that was the condition we saw on the wall.
Yes. I've seen that.
That's the date today, twelve.
Yes, the sixth.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Bob, you had a chance to review Meeting House Lane, twenty-five Rockwood Road, eighty-four Cleveland Street. You had a chance to review those projects prior to the forty B, or did you get a chance to see them at all?
Not really.
In most, and obviously in developments and subdivisions, you obviously, similar type of studies being done prior to?
They're always doing testing prior to getting started. It's just?
I think one of the comments that the appellant made was that, at these sites, this same type of activity took place with this same type of machine excavation. Have you found that in your expert opinion throughout your years of reviewing these sites, that this is what happens?
No.
Test holes? No. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Does any of these violations amount to the furtherance of the construction of a permanent roadway?
Do they amount to that?
Yeah.
It's, they amount to violating what the bylaw allows for before permitting. So when they, when they say the limited excavation, that means they can go in there and crawl around the site and do test holes, not to take the gravel and start spreading it out, creating a roadway.
I guess I'm trying to drill into what's the real problem here? What is really the problem? Is there, is there a suggestion that construction has now commenced on the site? Is that the suggestion? Is that the violation?
Yes.
I'd like to address that. I'll be brief. I know you've given me my chance, but, and I'd like to answer your question directly, Mr. Luciano. The question was, is, has there been an advancement on road building? And the short answer is no. If you look at the plan, and it's clearly the case for two reasons. One, because the proposed roadways do not coincide with the paths that are, were created by Mr. Hart. One, they're just simply not coincident. And we will produce a graphic illustrating that, but if you look at the plan that's before you, and if you compare that to the comprehensive permit application and the plan submitted therewith, and you sort of in your mind's eye, superimpose the one over the other, you'll see that they're simply not coincident. Secondly, and equally as important, you know, you've seen plans for proposed roadways. They require that there be excavation to a certain level, that the gradient of the roadway follow a straight line and then a smooth curve, and that the roadbed be prepared in such a way that there are layers of suitable material, such as gravel or crushed stone or what have you, that those layers are compacted in certain specified ways that meet town standards, and that ultimately, of course, there's pavement on top. There was no, you were there, you saw the site, or those of you who saw the site know that none of that was done. So to, you know, with all due respect, to suggest that this is in any way a jump start on road building just is not a reasonable suggestion at all for those reasons. So we would respectfully object to that notion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, as I see this, our building commissioner said you were in violation of D-1. Last time you were here, in your letter, you questioned whether D-1 is applicable. Well, the town building commissioner says it is. The zoning board then approved that you would put together, your engineer would put together a study, we gave him a list of things to do. They were submitted on Monday afternoon. They were supposed to be here prior to that. It was one week, I think, he thought he would have it done. It wasn't done. We've hired a peer review, an expert, to review after we reviewed the site, to review what was done. We asked you for a continuance from tonight because our peer review has not had time to review it. He will be looking to make sure what is on this plan is consistent with what was done in two thousand five and consistent with what the building inspector stated. You don't want to do that, or you didn't want to do that. You requested a hearing tonight, so I imagine what you're going to do tonight is present us your case again as to what this, your plan is. And that's fine. But this board has hired someone to review this, and we will wait to hear from our peer review before we make a decision, and the fines will continue until such time.
When you say that you've hired a peer review to make sure that this plan is consistent with two thousand five and with, I think you said, with what the building inspector said, that seemed to define the peer review consultant's scope. Could you, I don't know what you mean by consistent with two thousand five. What does this have to do with two thousand five exactly?
In our, and I don't have it in front of me, in our, in our request to you, do you have our request? The request we gave you for the number of items?
I think so, yes.
Okay, do you want to pull that out? You can look at the last bullet.
I don't have it.
Okay, I don't either, so you'll have to look at that.
All right.
Did you, I guess, Steve did not, Steve, did you comply with all the requests on that letter?
We did not, because I believe the ZBA did not require all of the items on the letter. You read, you read in that, I told you at that, at that meeting that night that we would not be providing wetlands from two thousand and five.
And we requested it. That was part of our request, along with the other bullet items.
We'll have to check the footage, but?
Oh, it was. We requested it.
I can tell you right now, we will not, and I said it that evening, we will not provide wetlands from two thousand and five that were prepared by another consultant that I have no idea where the origination was from to stamp on a plan for these purposes today with a seal from a professional land surveyor. I have no source of that information from two thousand and five.
And we will request it from our conservation committee to provide that to our, our expert.
Fair enough. That is public, that is public information. I have a copy of that information.
Against your plan.
Fair enough, but it is irrelevant.
Well, that's your opinion.
Yes, it is.
Again, we asked you for a continuance, because again, you can present all you want tonight. Nothing is going to be accomplished until this is reviewed. The building inspector has issued his opinion.
I think you characterize it exactly right when you say the building inspector has rendered his opinion, which of course is his prerogative, but again, that's really not the issue. The issue is you're charged with weighing evidence. What evidence do you have? You have some photos. And the question is, really, it seems like what it comes down to, the road building issue aside, is reading from D-1A1, whether or not the limited clearing and excavation that was done, which is what was done, by any measure, it's limited, otherwise it would be the whole site, whether or not the limited clearing and excavation that was done was permitted because it was to obtain necessary survey and engineering data or other activities required to survey, to secure, pardon me, necessary permits. And I think you have an abundance of evidence from Mr. O'Connell, and in the form of a plan, that confirms that that limited, that was limited clearing, and it was, was done to obtain necessary survey and engineering data or other activities to secure necessary permits. I would like to make you aware further of something we didn't know at the last meeting, which I think is very interesting and further compels a finding that the bylaw was not violated, and that is that the history of D-1A1 at your town meeting is very interesting. The article appeared in a certain form, which is in our letter, and it was changed by Article nine of, I think, the two thousand twelve town meeting. And interestingly, there was apparently an advisory committee that was appointed to study perhaps some portion of the bylaw, and they at least studied this portion of the bylaw, and they said that the change to Article nine was, quote, "to give developers greater leeway as they determine how to best develop a property prior to receiving a building permit. Under current law, developers face severe limitations on the extent to which they can clear or test a plot prior to receiving a building permit. These changes do not allow developers unrestricted clear-cutting rights. Clear-cutting remains restricted." And this, of course, is not clear-cutting, but it's, the testing that was done is consistent with the spirit of the bylaw as it was modified by your recent town meeting, so, yes.
That's your opinion. We're bound by the May ninth, two thousand seventeen bylaw book we have in front of us, not by what was done in two thousand twelve. I would suggest that you present your, I would present, you present your engineering, I would suggest you present your engineering study tonight. I think that's what we're here for. We have a number of other hearings after this. I think if you want to present your plan tonight, be happy to do that, and we'll move from there.
Shane, did you want to comment?
Well, I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Actually, Rob, can you clarify something? So the language that was amended in May of two thousand seventeen changed it to non-residential uses?
Well, that's, I don't know that that was changed.
Well, that's what you said in your letter, isn't it?
And it wasn't a two thousand seventeen change. I think the change occurred in two thousand twelve, and?
Why does?
Yes, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
When you quoted the section, you're using the language for non-residential uses.
Correct.
But in my version of the bylaw, that, that, that language doesn't exist, so it, can you clarify that?
Then I think you may have an incorrect version of the bylaw, because the current, well, let me put it to you this way. On page three of my letter, you will see the language of D-1A1 as it appeared in May of two thousand twelve. And in that version, you see that the word for non-residential uses does not appear. At, as I understand it, the May two thousand twelve meeting, Article nine was revised, and the result of that revision appears on page four of my letter, and is, I believe, in the current version of the bylaw, is D-1A1. And you see there, the word for non-residential uses now appears, so?
So is it your position that because this is a forty B, that this is a residential use and that therefore this section doesn't apply?
Yes.
Can we, can you pull up the plan, Amy, again?
Okay.
The forty B development plan? So your, Steve's, Steve's survey plan that shows the area of disturbance, there's large sections of red that appear in the neck, where all I can see is homes and roads being proposed. Can you explain what the disturbance was in those areas and what the purpose of that was?
Sure. Those were actually previously disturbed areas, and either you have the ability on your laptop, or if Amy would care to pull up Google Earth, you can go as far back as two thousand and nine on Google Earth and find those disturbed areas. Those areas are the result of prior due diligences from potential projects. The only different and unfortunate case for the appellant is that vegetation that had started to grow in those areas was disturbed from his activities that made it look like it was devastated. But I was on the site before, many times before we did any soil testing, and I personally observed those large areas, and you can, you can, you know, you can verify that simply by checking Google Earth and going back in time.
So on your plan, what delineates the existing disturbed areas from the new disturbed areas?
Areas where we actually did earth disturbance.
Now, how do I know which is which on your plan?
The red, there's notations, the red, and then there's black dashed lines that indicate existing paths where we certainly traveled with an excavator, but we did not disturb any earth other than some maybe test pits.
So on page, on page two of your, your plan?
Yep.
I'm talking about these, these pockets here.
This is today's, right?
Yeah, the one I emailed, ones I emailed you. Page two, yep.
Which one?
Yep, two.
All right, so those two pockets?
Yep.
Are these existing disturbed areas or newly disturbed areas?
They were existing disturbed areas where, which I guess you could say they were redisturbed.
So they were disturbed years ago, and then you guys went back out there and?
Yeah, I mean, this was, this was kind of a staging area. The first time I was ever on this site, you could turn a small tractor trailer around in this area, but it had started to vegetate because it was disturbed in two thousand nine and ten and eleven. I'm not sure how many times it was disturbed from prior, prior work on the property. We did a couple of test pits in that area, and I think Mr. O-Hart would agree that this was kind of a staging area until we could kind of get a little bit further into the property. This other area, we did a little bit more testing because we, this was, we were making our way into the property. We sought to see what kind of soil material we're going to be contending with. We hit some rock, we moved around, we dug another hole, we hit some rock, we moved around, we dug another hole. This area, you know, was pretty, some pretty extensive testing in that area, mostly because we wanted to know, as we were working our way into the site, what we were going to find for soil material. We decided to move on, and you can see the path, and this was, this was an existing path, but Mr. O-Hart continued that way with his excavator. And we knew based on our forty B plan preparation where we were going to put a wastewater discharge facility. And we knew that we had to get pickup trucks and other equipment back there. So when you go to sheet, sheet three, Amy, please, you'll see, you know, there are areas of? Same, yep, from the same folder.
Dan, he's referring to paths. He's really referring to cart paths.
No, I'm not. I'm referring to excavator paths.
They were, they were cart paths, according to the neighbors who rode those paths each and every day. They had vegetation on them, the centers were humped to where the wheels of a cart had gone through before. They weren't excavated paths, they were gravelled in.
Mr. Weider, which neighbors were riding carts up there? Who was riding the cart up on the property?
You know what I'm referring to. They were cart paths. The centers were humped, similar to a path.
Horse trails, Mr. Weider.
You showed us a path. There was a cart path that you didn't disturb. The center is humped, the sides are down, similar to most of the cart paths on that side of town. And the neighbors' assertions were, based on riding their horses and things in there, that this area had been disturbed. And even your son mentioned to, I think, one of the inspectors on the site, that the staging area you had planned on moving your masonry equipment to at some point. First area off Seacong Street.
We're actually discussing the cart paths, Mr. Weider.
We're discussing the site. We're discussing the site. You want to get into what is a cart path versus a path? It was not a path, they were cart paths. But they were completely vegetated, they were not excavated by a machine and gravelled in. Let's state the facts.
I referred to the term paths for the reference of discussion I was having with Attorney Hill. So I'll continue that. So the paths that the excavator traveled, you know, they're clearly illustrated as narrow paths. So there's a path here, and then there's a path here, and there's a path that goes down to the back of the site. We did some extensive testing here because there's a ledge, there's, you know, we found some ledge just under the surface, so we were doing extensive testing to find out the extent and limits of that, of that ledge in that area. Mr. O-Hart found some fantastic sand and gravel. He knew, with discussions with me, that we were going to have to get pickup trucks with water for percolation testing and what have you to the back of the site. He made this passable for my pickup truck, his pickup truck, any other else who had to get back there for. There was an existing path up this hill. Mr. O'Hart followed that existing path with his excavator, and we did some test pits at the top of the hill. He didn't gravel this in because topographically, we were never going to get a pickup truck up there. The topography wasn't going to accommodate that. But... And we knew that we didn't have to do extensive testing there because we weren't going to put a large wastewater discharge area there. Our discharge area was down here on this other part of the property. So, then, if we continue on to the next sheet, please, Amy. Mr. O'Hart drove up this esker, did the test hole to see if this esker was the result of ledge. We came back down, went down, created this path, did some testing in here where we are going to have... This is the wastewater discharge area. We have a couple of wings. We went out and did some test pits. And then we continued down and created this path where we're going to have some stormwater controls. And we just turned the corner to see what we're going to find based on this topographic condition, and we went right back out. Amy, could you pull up the image that I provided you tonight? The image that Amy's about to show you is from a November 9, 2017 satellite photograph. If you didn't know anything about this project, and you came here tonight to sit in the audience, and we're talking about extensive disturbance and clear-cutting and land disturbance, and you looked at this photo that we're about to show, you would think that you would see something different. Yep, that one. You zoom in. Okay, so, this is Secong Street here. This is in a butter who's...
Horse Stables.
Yep, the Horse Stables.
Mr. Brogans probably here.
Yep, Mr. Brogans, right?
Solar panels over beyond experts.
So, this is the general area of the property. I'm not sure if it's clear to you, but it's pretty clear to me that I don't see clear-cutting. I don't see extensive tree clearing. But what I do see is the historic areas that were cleared here and here that are consistent with the plan that I provided you, with those large extensive areas. And you'll find those on Google Earth like I indicated. And feel free to zoom in as much as you'd like, Amy. But I don't see extensive clearing.
And this picture was taken when?
November 9, 2017, less than a month ago.
Where did this come from?
Satellite imagery. We order it. We have access to that information.
Where?
It's a company that provides it. I can get you the info.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You're all done, Steve?
For now, yeah.
All right. We... Rob, we received your letter on December 5. We are currently having Town Council review it. Again, we just got this yesterday. We had a special town meeting last night, so we have no feedback from him yet. We engaged the peer review consultant on, I believe, Monday of this week. The peer review consultant is just starting his work. He'll be visiting the site, reviewing documents. And unless the board thinks we can accomplish anything else tonight, that seems like a reasonable good next step.
Does that seem like a good next step?
Some feedback from Town Council, feedback from peer review, and...
Looking for any comments from the board.
Yeah. And if there are butters here tonight that have any questions, feel free to ask them now.
I have a question. My name is Monica Collin.
You have to use the microphone.
Hi, Monica Collin. I live at 150 Secong Street. It seems to me that a group of the folks here went on the walk-through with Mass Housing on March 28, I think it was. Those same folks have since gone back out to look at this property after you guys asked your team to go back out. So, you guys have witnessed the change of the property, right? You've seen it. We have. Isn't that the evidence? Isn't that what you went out to look at?
Yeah, yeah. You're right.
So, I'm just kind of... Everybody's saying there's no evidence, but I think you guys have seen it.
We haven't said there's no evidence.
No, but other people have. So, I think there is evidence to point out that something has changed there.
Yeah.
And that's really the only point I want to make.
Okay, thank you. All right, so...
Amy, what do we have on the 20th of December?
And that should give peer review a time to... By the 20th. Do you have time to go... What's today?
When did he get engaged?
On Monday. Monday or Tuesday of this week, yeah. Too tight?
Not sure what's the 20th. The board is tasked over.
He's going to do a site visit. He's going to review, you know, the area of disturbance, look at these documents. We did request some additional information.
Do you have any other historical maps? Do you have... This company that you got the satellite image from, do they also provide satellite images, like historic satellite images that we could compare?
If they don't, then I know others that do.
What in particular would you be looking for? For dates or data, for example?
I mean, I would think anything prior to 2017, so we have an idea of what it looked like in 2016 and 2015. I mean, you're saying that nothing... The only time that you've gone out there to make changes is just recently, and so having a baseline photograph would be helpful.
Yeah, Google Earth. You can go back in time on Google Earth, but, you know, sometimes the...
Yeah, I've got that in front of me, but it's...
Quality can vary.
Yeah, the quality's not great.
Depends on what time of year. It's important to go back to the time of year where the vegetation wasn't... You know, doesn't really disrupt the photo.
So, we really need more proof. Are they really...
I have one question. So, those red lines on the plans, those are the contours. How come... And the dashed line is the limit of disturbance. So, how do the contours go outside of the limit of disturbance?
The contours have to tie in, so, I mean, talking about probably less than a foot. You know, we did this by an on-the-ground survey, so the surveyor, the surveyors on site that do the work, they take a shot, for example, like what is like edge of disturbed ground. We generate the topography from all of their shots. All of their shots have elevations. We generate the topography. The original topography was generated by aerial mapping, which is very common for large tracts of land. So, there are tolerances that are acceptable under national mapping standards, so those tolerate...
Microphone.
I'm sorry.
So, I would associate the differences, the slight differences in the topography there to the tolerances within the national mapping standards from an aerial topo, which is the original gray lines, to the actual on-the-ground instrument survey that we provided at the request of the board.
So, the actual limit of disturbance line doesn't necessarily mean the contours. It's that dashed line.
Dash line is the actual limit of disturbance line, yeah.
Because I saw one of the contours went over one of the property lines on...
It's heavy.
On one of the abutting properties, it's on Sheet Three or Four. Let's see it better on the computer. The 214 contour goes over.
What are you saying? It's not the disturbance?
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, it's not the disturbance, right? It's just the...
Amy, what do we have for January 3? Do we have anything on schedule yet?
It's at King Philip. I think we just have... We'll have Nine Fruit Street every week.
Okay.
And I think we'll have Abbey.
We haven't scheduled it yet for the 3rd.
No.
Okay.
She showed... You showed Abbeyville on the 20th, right?
Right.
But that's being...
So, we don't... I'm sorry?
That's going to get extended, you think?
Yes. So, we don't...
It's extended right now through January.
We just have Nine Fruit on the 3rd.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue this public hearing for 144 Secong Street appeal till 1/3/18 at 7:30 PM. Location?
Can I...
Location will be the...
We... I have reserved King Philip, but if we're not going to have Abbey, then we don't need to do that. So, I don't know if you want to keep it at King Philip just to be safe, or if you're not going to continue. Abbey's on October 1st.
Let's have it here.
Is this... You're talking about January 3?
It's January 3, yeah.
And that's likely to be Abbeyville as well?
Yes.
I mean, I would do King Philip, wouldn't you, because...
Yes, so keep it at King Philip High School.
So, location is King Philip.
Can I just, before you move on, I think it would be helpful if Steve would put in his note column the source of the gray topography and the source of the red topography. What you just described, I think, would be good for the record to establish that... And tell us where... You said there were aerial topography. Who put this on here? You know, just create that record.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I think, not to extend anything here, it's important to note that we did... We ran a volume analysis and compared the two topographies. There's virtually no change in volume from the earth disturbance, so, you know, I can add that as a note as well. I know that was brought up in discussion at the last meeting. I think the point of this additional topography was to show whether there were large amounts of gravel imported or exported, and I can testify this evening to state that there was not. So, I can provide a notation to that extent on the plan as well.
Did you do some sort of calculation, or...
Yeah, yeah. We... Yep, there's a... The software allows a comparison of the surfaces, because there's a topography creates a surface. You compare one surface to the other, and you get an output. Yep.
I would suggest that you provide that as well.
Yep, happy to. And before the vote is taken on the motion, and the second, Mr. O'Hart respectfully requests that he be notified before the peer review accesses the property.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Mr. O'Hart would like to be notified before the peer review... When the peer review will be on the property. He has no intention to join him. That's not the... But just to be notified of who is entering and exiting his property.
Absolutely. Now, he's going to want to talk with you. Are you okay with that?
I am okay with that. The board is okay with that, yes.
Okay. Okay, good. So, did we conclude that motion, Chris?
We'll restate it basically. We are going to continue the public hearing for 144 Secong Street appeal till 1/3/18 at 7:30 PM. No, 7:30, because we have Nine Fruit Street at 7:15 or 7 o'clock.
We don't have a time yet.
Right, so we'll do that. We'll do this at 7:30 at the KP Junior High School or Middle School.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, all in favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do feel compelled to state for the record once again that we have... We believed and continue to believe and have since this was opened on September 21, I think, that you have all the information and evidence necessary to render a decision. And we've asked that you do so, and we object to any running of the fines pending your delay in rendering that decision for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Our next hearing is...
Oh, you're... You're off the hook. I wrote an opinion letter of this. Oh, which one? What is he wrong with? Isn't this what I... Is this what I looked up for you?
No. No, that was something else.
Oh, okay.
Is that for tonight? Do we have that here in time?
No. No, this is something else we looked at.
Okay. All right. You can say if you want.
I'll find it. I had him on.
It's good.
Okay, all right. Okay, our next hearing is 43 Rockwood Road, continuation of... Continuation for Bruce and Marie Simpson. The appeal, right. Continuation for Bruce and Marie Simpson. Come on down.
Do we need Dan's legal advice as it relates to this?
No. All right, good night.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, Mr. Weider.
Do you want to read this to start the hearing? No, we already have the public hearing. Do you have the agreement of the public hearing?
Okay, everyone's here? All right.
Same for everyone here for Mr. Bullock first.
Yeah. All right, Bob, if you wanted to start the process tonight with how this all began.
I received a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Simpson about rendering a zoning decision on a property across the street from the 43 Rockwood Road. This property has been, you know, used for office use for quite some time now. Back in '72, their point was that this property that has been used as an office, there was an accessory use to a house that was there that was... Been abandoned for as long as I've been working here, and actually just came down two weeks ago. It was taken down because it was severely decayed. So, they had asked for an opinion on the zoning. I had sent them a decision on my opinion of the zoning, that this property was a legal non-conforming property based on a special permit that was issued in 1972. And in that decision, it once was a restaurant called the Tac Room prior to 1972. The applicant, I think it was Dick Boomer, that came in and asked the board, in the decision, they asked for a public hearing was held by the Board of Appeals at 8:00 PM on Wednesday, October 11, 1972, in the Town Hall pursuant to the request of Richard Boomer, 126 Union Street, Norfolk, Mass, for a special permit to change an existing non-conforming use into another non-conforming use. Said use being the Tac Room, 43 Rockwood Road, Norfolk, Mass. In that decision, they had asked for another non-conforming use. And in their decision, they wrote at the end of this that the law states that by special permit, any non-conforming use may be changed to another non-conforming specified use, not substantially different in character, nor more detrimental or objectionable to a neighborhood. Since Mr. Boomer was... Has specified that the building use will be for office space only, since he does not plan to expand the building area, and since a new use is allowed by law, the board consisting of Lou Rall, John Ravinsky, Edward Pink, Raymond Odoardi, and James Shroen voted to allow the special permit. And my opinion was that they allowed the special permit that was asked for for a non-conforming... Another non-conforming use as an office use. So, it has been my opinion for the time that I've been here that as long as an office use was continuing that space without a... Being vacant for more than two years, then it would be grandfathered under that special permit to continue that office use. And that's what they're appealing, that they don't believe that that's correct. So, here we are.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Bullock, from members of the board?
When we say grandfathered, was there any change of ownership? Do we have time?
Yes, a couple of times.
And can that apply still with a change in ownership?
The special permit was running with the property.
So, it's not attached to the ownership?
Not that I know of, no.
I have a question.
Hang on. We'll get to you. Hang on, please.
Could I add a couple of things? Before I had actually sent out my opinion, I had sent it to Town Council, and Town Council had concurred that this is the right decision, so I just want to add that. That was Attorney Dave DeLuca.
Okay. All right, we'll get to your questions in a minute. We need to continue with the testimony that we'll be taking from the applicant. Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, yes. Phil Mackey, Mackey &amp; Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, Nord, Massachusetts, is counsel for and on behalf of the applicant. I'm just passing out so you can reference what I will be talking, copies of the memorandum that I've put together regarding this. I have to get all the way around the table. I have one more member than I was expecting.
Do I have that electronically, or can I get it?
I will send it to you tomorrow morning, absolutely. And I've already given this to Mr. Attorney Anaselli, so he's had a chance to see it. And I would submit for the record two letters that, one, if you take comments from the public, I would ask you to read.
All right, thank you.
So, again, Phil Mackey as counsel for the applicant, Bruce and Marie Simpson. And ironically, I don't think we have any factual differences with what has been said thus far. In my memorandum, I state that absolutely, at least for the purposes of tonight, there was a restaurant there until 1972. In 1972, a special permit for an office use was granted. And listening to Mr. Bullock, we would, I think, both agree that once that, agreed that permit was granted, the restaurant use was no longer the grandfathered use, but it was an office use. Where our opinions start to diverge is basically what has happened kind of since 1972. And the building inspector's letter to the appellants, he stated that it's been continuously used. I guess that would be our first factual disagreement. Again, not for, as far as the interpretation of bylaw, or even the process to get there. But in 2011, a special permit was applied for to this board. And I had nothing to do with that, and all I have was the record that's on file. And this board forwarded the memorandum to Town Council at that point. And in it, it said, and I've attached that as one of the exhibits for your perusal. Basically, that they found that the house had been vacant for six to eight years, and the office had been vacant as well. So, in our opinion, the board has already found at one point that this has been vacant for more than two years. And I would also like to kind of go down the case law here a little bit. Basically, you know, the building inspector is correct. And as far as your bylaw goes, you have a two-year period. The two-year period is not vacant or not vacant, it is used for the purpose that is non-conforming. That case law started in 1987, was reaffirmed in 97. And I've provided all those for you, and I'll be happy to outline each case if you would like to hear more, you know, later during your questions. But given that we're about an hour behind, I'm gonna summarize at this point. And as late as 2013, they basically, the courts have basically found saying that in a bylaw that says use for two years, that is meant to be a bright-line test that's easily understandable. It's not, is it occupied, is it not occupied? Has the use that is not conforming been used continuously or not broken for two years? So, in this particular case, the question is, is the office building, or has the office building ever been not used for an office building for more than two years? Someone could've moved in, someone could've lived there, someone could've done anything else they wanted. They could've kept the lights on, they could've stored their motorcycles in it for, you know, example. So, the question that's before your board is, has the building been used as an office continuously since the 1972 permit? Or if it hasn't, has it been broken for more than two years? And so, again, I would submit, based on the findings of this board, at least that we could find on record, that at one point, you found that it had been vacant for more than two years. And I have, again, with me applicants who live literally across the street from this that can attest to the same. And moreover, this isn't just one bite at the apple, and for, I should say fortunately for you, or not. But nothing's ever simple to be a yes or no at one time. In 2011, an office use was started. The special permit was withdrawn, the request, about five days later. I can't tell you why, it's not in any file that we could find. All I know is it was withdrawn after your letter was sent. An office use was put there, again, the Simpsons can attest to that fact. And our point to this is that office use, in our opinion, respectfully, was illegal. Whether it was appealed, not appealed, issued a violation notice, not issued a violation notice, that's actually all irrelevant for our discussions here. Simply starting up a use that was not permissible does not somehow restart the prior non-conforming status of any use or any lot. Concurrently, I should say in 1997, or at least as far back as 97, I honestly didn't go back further than that, because I didn't feel it was necessary. Your bylaw allows for a home occupation. And it was arguable, and I believe that's what my clients felt they had across the street from you, which is why we're here now in 2017 instead of 2011. There was a house, there was an occupation, the two were at least tangentially related, or at least that was what they believed at the time. But, again, even if that were the case, that is, was allowed use, and that does not somehow now trigger non-conforming. If anything, that would say from here on, for, you know, from that point forward, you need to make this a home occupation, because that's conforming, that's in line with the bylaw. So, kinda in 2011, you have a choice. It was either an illegal use, or it was a conforming use. But either way, that knocks out prior non-conforming protection for a use. And then come forward to today, again, my clients are here, and will testify that to all intents and purposes, the building in question was not used, again, this is the key here, was not used since approximately 2014 to date, and currently it's on the market, so it's certainly not being used for anything at this point, as an office. So, once again, if it didn't fail in '11, if it wasn't conforming in '11, in 2017, based on the discontinuance of the use sometime in 2014, that's, again, over two years, once again, it would've lost its non-conforming stature. So, that's effectively what we're saying. I'm not arguing Mr. Bullock's interpretation of the bylaw or non-conformity whatsoever. We just don't think that all of the facts were available to him, or understood. And we respectfully disagree with the conclusion that he has. But as far as his interpretation of the bylaw, is non-conforming use, conforming use, that part we don't have an issue with. It is simply, we believe that there was a greater than two-year gap before 2011, which would've wiped out non-conformity. In 2011, a business was allowed to be there. So, that was either illegal, or it was conforming as a home occupation. And again, I've stated in my letter, if this board finds that there was a home occupation, and the owner can find a buyer, and they sell it as a home occupation, that's the bylaw. We have no issue with that whatsoever. Our issue, and what we're asking for clarification from the board, is currently the building in question is being marketed as a commercial property. It's in a residential zone, and we don't believe that it is an unfettered commercial, non-conforming use in that area. That's pretty much my case in chief. Marie, do you wanna say anything at this point? Okay. Okay. So, I, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, turn it over to Mr. Simpson.
Okay, thank you. I find two reasons to use that property. One, it was illegal, non-conforming by special permit in 1972. Special permit does not go with the property, special permit goes with the applicant. There is no applicant there. In fact, there's no home there. You cannot grandfather a special permit to a person, in this case, Mr. Boomer, who has not been there in the last 25 years. It has been used, perhaps illegally, we have not objected. But the town failed to protect us from living across the street from a falling-down building filled with rats and cats and horrible smells. It was a horrible example of what Norfolk you were coming into when you came in on 115. We put up with all of that. But after it had been abandoned, the house had been abandoned, the business had been abandoned, we felt it should finally come into compliance. And that's what we're asking for.
Mr. Chairman, subject to your questions, that is our testimony in chief.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from the board?
Just the documentation of this gap of time, that nobody was, there was no business there, right? There was a couple of different businesses that had put a sign up over there. One was a Prudential Realty at one time, right? And that ceased, do we have a date when that officially ceased? Some, I mean, we might not have it right this moment, but that'd be interesting, though, when that officially ceased, and then when another business tried to show up, legal or not. Just to show we have a documented two-year gap, if that makes sense. Unless I'm wrong asking that question, Bob.
I have different permits for signs that were there from different businesses. My understanding that unless the lights go out and the water shut off, that's still operating. That's my understanding. You know, it's not abandoned. The house was abandoned, and I did approach the owner to take it down. And it is taken down now. You know, I never, I don't recall ever getting a complaint about it before. But as far as the businesses that were there, you know, I'm not going there to make sure that someone's in the office every day. I'm just, you know, I'm getting paperwork, I'm seeing that there's a sign there, that the, the lights are on. It seems to me that, you know, there's business there.
Then maybe my other question, that would go back to the issue of the special permit staying with the applicant, or staying with the property. I guess I'm not clear on that yet.
I would have to go to Town Council for that, I would, you know. It was, I know the owner has his attorney here, representing the owners of the property, so he may address that.
Excuse me, Bob, could you just give us a layout of like what's going on in that land? Is there, is there a building now not on that land?
This, this building right here has been removed.
Okay.
This is where the office is, right here, this is the parking lot, up in the front. This, I don't believe is even there. I think that's been gone for a while.
Okay.
Right now, the only thing standing is this office building.
If I may just respond and somewhat amplify to Mr. Bullock. You're new to me, so I just wanna try not to destroy your name. Mr. Sebastiano, your question is absolutely on point. The burden of proof to prove that it has been used continuously isn't on the building inspector, it's really not even on the neighbors, it's on the applicant himself. There's no requirement for the building department, it's unfor, it's, it would take every bit of his budget and then some if he had to go into every business every day. However, your question to the owner's attorney could be to provide proof of continuous use. And I did wanna make one comment, I said I wasn't gonna read all the cases, I'm gonna try and stick with that. But in Davis v. Chatham, back in 2001, they were, the case was specifically on difference between not used and abandoned. And basically, what they said is that the Mass. General Laws have now set up a two-pronged test. The town can use either, both, but they are not conjunctive. One is, is the use abandoned? And to Mr. Bullock's point, he's absolutely correct. If the test in Norfolk was abandonment, it's, are the lights on? Are they trying to sell it, are they trying to do anything to keep an office building in? As long as they're intending to come back in, it's not abandoned. However, the Norfolk bylaw doesn't say abandoned, it says not used for a period of two years. The other test under the Mass. General Laws is simple. It is whether or not there was a two-year period wherein the non-conforming use was not used. And that has nothing to do with whether it was abandoned or not abandoned. It was meant to give the board, the building inspector, and basically, any layman who's trying to enforce the bylaw, a very clear decision-making path. So, you don't have to figure out what the intent was, the court already said that. You don't have to acquire intent, you don't have to require abandonment. All you have to do is not use it for two years. And that is what we're saying has happened here. Not necessarily it was abandoned, but that's not what your bylaw requires. The bylaw says not used for a period of two years. At least as far as non-agricultural uses are. I don't think anyone's arguing that this was an agricultural use. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My, my understanding and recollection is that Boomer did have a real estate office there. And then, I think it was Mr. Cahalan took that office over at one point in time. And I, and I guess there was a period of time, it must've been somewhere around the late 90s, early 2000s, he left, I think he was due to sickness, or he moved, I think he, I thought he moved down south. And I think at that period of time, there was no use in that site. And the only thing I remember, the next operation there, I remember, I think it was an asphalt seal coating company, I thought, was the next operation in there, which was sometime in the late 2000s.
A1 paving. Right.
And green trees.
So, and I think, and I don't know at what point in time, but at one point in time, obviously, Mr. Boomer sold that property to Mr. Kevin Olafland. But our bylaw says, and I think you said two years, our bylaw says G4, that any use permitted by special permit that is discontinued for a period of one year shall cause the special permit to lapse. So, if the use was a office building, Mr. Boomer was very smart not to say a real estate office, he didn't go for an accessory building, because he didn't qualify for a home business under the bylaws of 1968. It didn't list a real estate office, or a general office, it lists artisans, carpenters, so have, what have you. So, he filed for a special permit to get a real, to get an office building. When that's, when Mr. Cahalan operation ceased, and that building wasn't used for a period of one year, my understanding of a special permit was, that special permit ceased to exist and would have to be reapplied for. So, yes, once those other businesses went in sometime in the 2000s, they were, yes, effectively, probably illegal, because the home was no longer occupied. So, therefore, it didn't qualify for a home business, and there was no special permit attached to that building. Now, if we build, if they build a home there today, that building would qualify as an accessory building under our current bylaw. And if someone so choose to ask for a special permit on that building, they probably, it no longer has its non-conformity status. So, therefore, I don't think it could be used as an office building, could it? Or could it be used as an office building again, by special permit?
No, I don't believe so.
Because it's lost its non...
Correct. I believe it would have to conform to your requirements for home occupation, which allow a lot of things.
Right.
But not just a standalone office.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
You know, I just have one question regarding the special, special permits and them running with the land. And I just, I was always under the impression that special permits did not run with the land, that they were for that particular application, and that application only. Am I, am I off on that?
I believe you're correct.
Variance, I'm gonna add.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't, no, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, that's all, you know.
Variance is registered deeds, indebted.
When you apply for a variance, that goes on your deed, it's registered, it's a registered deeds indebted. It remains a permanent part of your property.
Well, they recorded, they recorded, do they, is this? This var, this special permit was also recorded.
You know me.
Now, I know.
So, I don't know if that affects the land, or, so, just, I'm just throwing it out there, we can figure that one out later on, I guess.
The special permit is issued to the applicant. That was Mrs. Boomer, or Mr. Boomer, in 1972.
Yeah, Mr. Boomer, Richard T., or Richard I.
He's not there any longer.
And you're saying it does not run with the land?
It also looked like the person who had the paving business applied for a special permit, but pulled that permit, pulled that application away.
Oh, okay, so there was a subsequent special permit issued, is that what you're saying?
It says 2011, there was another application for a special permit.
Correct.
But that was not awarded or completed.
It was never acted upon.
They was, they was through approximately a week after it was filed.
Right.
And again, all I can let is the file speak for itself. That was what's on record, that's what I provided for.
Okay, yeah, yes, and now we'll open it up to Butters. Yes, do you represent the owner?
I represent the landowner, James LaRusso, trustee of Lobo Realty Trust. And first of all, factually... And first of all, factually, this property was sold by Mr. Boomer in 1987 to Mr. Olafland. And Mr. Olafland turned around and sold it to my client about a month and a half later.
Did you say 1987?
I've got to get that date straight, I'm not sure about that. If, I can just put it down for a second.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Richard Boomer sold this property by deed dated June 14, 2007, I'm sorry, to Kevin Olafland, trustee of S&amp;K Realty Trust. Kevin Olafland sold it about a month and a half later to my client, James LaRusso, trustee of Lobo Realty Trust, and that deed was dated August 1, 2007. Now, from, from that time forward, my client made some repairs to the building, not, not the residence, the building. And then he occupied it himself for his office. My client owns a, the Rentham Block building in Rentham Center, and he has several tenants in that building. And he used this building on Rockwood Road for his rental business there, and also probably to talk to tradesmen that he needed to repair the building and for other purposes related to his real estate business. So he continued to use it as an office. Now, in 2011, he rented it to the gentleman that you were referring to, the asphalt company, and also to a tree service company. And they rented this property together, and they used it for their office purposes. They didn't use it for their business, their business per se, they used it for office purposes. They didn't park any equipment or trucks there. And they moved out in the, at the end of May 2016 or early June 2016. Mr. LaRusso is not here tonight because he had to go to Florida to take care of some hurricane damage to his condominium there. He's, he's on his way back as we speak right now, I believe, but in any event, that's why he's not here tonight. So the property has not been vacant for the past two years, it's been vacant for approximately one and a half years. He is marketing the property, and I don't know where the issue of marketing it as a, as a commercial use comes from, because his instructions to the real estate agent were that it was, he was to market it as a non-conforming use for office purposes only, and they couldn't use it for anything but an office. While, while Mr. LaRusso was in there, in that building with his office, he was approached by at least three or four people who wanted to open a pizza shop there. He told them, no, it can only be used for office purposes. He was also approached by a lady who wanted to open a hairdressing salon there. He gave her the same answer. And there were other tenants, potential tenants, that he turned away because he realized it had to be continued as an office use to, to preserve the non-conforming use that had been allowed by this board in 1973, I believe it was. So it hasn't, the fact of the matter is that it hasn't been abandoned for the past two, for two years. And I, you know, I recognize that that, that is the law, and obviously, he's got to do something before, I would say, you know, the end of May of this coming year, 2018, or else he's going to lose the non-conformity status and the protection that it affords. Other than that, I think the, I think this property, the confusion arises because this property was non-conforming right from day one. When, I, I have a plan showing that building was used as a store in 1963, according to this plan. That predates the adoption of the zoning bylaw in Norfolk. I think it's been a non-conforming use since day one. And the only change to that has been the fact that in 1973, the, this board issued the special permit authorizing the, the change of use to a office use, the change of the non-conforming use to an office use, which was less detrimental, whatever the statutory phrase is in the bylaw, less detrimental to the neighborhood, basically. So from that point forward, it's been continued as a, not, from that point forward, yes, it's been continued as an office use. So if you have any questions, I'll, I'll answer them as best I can, but those are the facts as I understand them.
Couple of things. One is, I'll first reference G4. Any use permitted by special permit that is discontinued for a period of one year or more shall cause the special permit to lapse. You all just, you just testified that the office has been vacant for a year and a half, so therefore, it no longer meets our special permit criteria.
I don't agree. I'm sorry.
You don't agree that it meets our special permit criteria?
It does meet the special permit criteria.
But it has been vacant for a year and a half.
It's, it's, it's a non-conforming use that was...
Yes.
That, that was modified by that special permit, the non-conformity continues.
It says a use permitted by special permit, which is what that building has on it. It has a special permit to be used as an office space. If it isn't used for one year, the special permit ceases to, ceases.
I understand what it says, and I know, I know the point that you're making, it's well-taken, except that this was a non-conforming use from the beginning, and it did not lose that status because of the special permit to change to another non-conforming use.
But it lost its special permit.
No, there was...
Had a special permit to be an office building, when it no longer was being used as an office, an office building, it lost that right. The use of that office is no longer being, was no longer being used. And then you, you seem to lapse from the period that Mr. Boomer owned it to 2007. There seemed to be, there's a great, and Mr. LaRusso bought in 2007 from Mr. Olafland.
Correct.
Prior to that, there seemed to be years of vacancy as well. So it could have been non-conform, it's a non-conforming lot, but the non-conforming lot and the use of that building, as far as I'm concerned, are two separate things. There was a use permitted in that building, a office building. It ceased during the 2000 period sometime, I don't know the dates. I guess we could ask the town for the corporate tax tangible asset records to see if there was any tangible assets in that building submitted via taxes during that period of time. But then it ceased to operate again in 2016 to today, which is a year and a half. So I guess, I guess I'm going to try and understand is, our bylaw says if you don't use it, you lose the special permit. We, we require people who receive special permits in this town to come in every year pre-construction to renew their permits. We issue special permits for projects. There's a special permit on that building issued in '74 for an office building. It ceased to function.
Office use.
Office, office, I think it says office building.
Well, it shouldn't because it, their building was already there.
Maybe it says office use. So the office use ceased for a year and a half. And it ceased at some point in time in the summer, which routine, when Mr. Cahalan moved out and Mr. Olafland purchased the building.
Well, Mr. Olaf...
So didn't it lose its special permit?
No, I don't believe so, because the non, the non-conformity continues, it did not lose the status as a non-conforming use. Then the special permit was to change from one type of non-conforming use to a less intensive use of non, non-conforming use.
By special permit.
Yes, but that doesn't mean that it lost its non-conformity.
It did lose non-conformity, but it lost its special permit to be used as an office building. Why would we issue a special permit if it could have continued as an, why couldn't it have been an office building after the tavern left, the restaurant left?
It could have been.
Why couldn't it?
It could, it could have been used, as I think.
Why?
Why? Because it was a non-conforming use from the beginning.
Yes, but when the tavern left, when the restaurant left...
Right.
Why couldn't he just move in and run his real estate office? Non-conforming use, you're saying, so why couldn't he just open up a real estate office? Why couldn't he have done anything with that building at that time? He could, because our bylaw said you either had to use it as a home business, or by special permit you could change it. He, by special permit, got it changed to an office use. That's why.
But it's a less non, no...
It is, it's absolutely, it's less detrimental to the neighborhood via a special permit. That's why we give a special permit.
Right, but that doesn't, the special...
But the special permit ceases to operate with the use. Sometime in the 2000s, that operation ceased to be used. And then you just testified that sometime in the last year and a half, it also ceased to operate. So twice in this, in this period of decade, it ceased to operate.
There's no evidence about the, before 2016, that it stopped being used for two years. My understanding is that it continued to be used as an office use right up until the time that Olafland purchased it. And then Olafland used it as a real estate office for a little bit, and then my client used it since then, until 2011, when the current tenants went in there. And the non-conformity was not lost. It's still a non-conforming use.
By special permit? What do you consider, I guess I'm, I'm guessing confused at your definition of what a special permit was issued for.
It was issued to change a, one, no, to change one non-conforming use to a less detrimental non-conforming use.
Correct. The special permit. And do you agree that the special permit goes with the use?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do you agree that the spec, the use goes with the special permit? Do you agree that the special permit goes with the use?
In theory, as a matter of law, it does, but the non-conformity doesn't go away. It's still a non-conforming use, and it has been all these years, is my opinion. And there's no, there's been no evidence here that there was any abandonment of that non-conforming use before 2007.
Well, again, we could, we could look at the tangible asset records to determine if there was any tangible assets ever listed to the town for a period of time after Mr. Cahalan left.
Are you talking about property taxes?
Hmm?
Are you talking about personal property taxes?
No, 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 tangible assets. The town requires that every corporation in town file a tangible asset, filing every year of the assets in their building.
Corporations only?
Corporations.
All right, well, I don't know if they were corporations that...
Well, it's, this Mr. LaRusso's a corporation, isn't it?
No, it isn't. It's a nominee Realty Trust.
Okay.
And so was, so was Mr. Olafland, that was a nominee Realty Trust as well, when he bought it. And Mr. Boomer, I have no idea if he had a corporation or not.
I guess we could check, we could check to tackle, I'm not an expert in that area, to find out if they sent corp, if they sent that to them as well, as well as corporations.
Chris, you know, really, regardless of what happened in 2002 or 2007 or any of that, okay, when it may or may not have been used correctly, or it was abandoned or not abandoned, if in fact, as the attorney has said, it has not been used for 18 months, and if our bylaw specifically states that if it's discontinued for a period of one year or more, I think that's what we should probably be focusing on.
We, we can focus on that as well, yeah.
Because, because then in, if, this is what the bylaw says, and if a special permit was granted for the business, not for the property, like a variance would be, then it would appear that the special permit, from my reading, okay, has lapsed.
This is correct?
But I, again, I don't believe that that eliminates the non-conforming use that was...
Okay, well, does that, is what he's saying just means that another special permit can be applied for at some future date, is that what he's saying? Meaning by saying that it's, it's got non-conformity, it would have to come to us as another special permit request, I guess. That's the only thing I'm hearing here.
Yeah, he could apply to expand a non-conforming use by way of a special permit, correct. If that's what you mean, yes.
Okay, Mr. Simpson?
I do not know how you can apply, I do not know how you can apply to put a business in a residential zone. The issue is the zone. This is a residential zone. If you want to put a business in it, you have to do it according to law. And the way they did it originally was with Mr. Boomer. He had a residence in the house, and he had a real estate business. Once no one lived in the house anymore, this is a residential district.
Yeah, I'm not saying another special permit would ever be granted for it, I'm just saying that, you know, I'm listening to just certain...
Yeah, but the whole issue goes back to Mr. Boomer. He was granted a special permit. A special permit goes with the applicant. It doesn't go down five applicants in a determination that it's less non-conforming or more non-conforming. It is a, it is a business in a residential zone. There has to be some protection to the people who live in residential zones that businesses are not going to come in. We allow one. One is, an artisan can have his trade, he can have a little office, and he can live in the house. That's how we allow that in the, in the zoning bylaws for the town in Norfolk. We don't go back 20 or 30 years and determine that it's been running illegally for all those 20 years and grant them an extension again. That isn't how it works. Somebody has to protect the residential district. That's you.
Point of call, excuse me.
Question over there, Ms. Chilton. Yes, okay, you got it, Mary. Yes, sir, go ahead. Can you take, grab the microphone?
I can talk loud.
No, 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 there's, this is on TV, so...
My name is Robert Anderson. Since 1976, I've lived in back and beside that property. I knew Dick Boomer very well. I also met his mother. She was still alive in '76 and '77. She only lived a couple of years beyond that. I knew Kevin Olafland. A lot of people forget that when Olafland bought the property, he just put a sign up on the corner of Boardman Street that said, "We'll build a house here." He had that sign. I don't remember him using the office building, maybe a couple of times. After Kevin Olafland used it, I saw Jack Cahalan, I knew Jack Cahalan very well. I knew the tree guy that was there. But what is interesting is that I was confronted with the same issue on Route 1 in Plainville of a non-conforming use. For three years, I had attorneys say to me that a truck stop that was not issued was in fact grandfathered. And for three years, I argued it out with them, I went to court with them, and ultimately it proved that I was right, because when I got out of the Army in 1972, I went down and picked up the zoning variance for my father, and nobody believed me. So in the three years that I fought the Plainville Truck Stop, there were many death threats made against me, my life in that period. I'm very familiar with this type of argument. And again, it was determined that when the truck stop shut down, it was a non-conforming use.
Anybody else?
My name's Nina O'Brien, I live at 36th Boardman Street with my husband Dave Miller, and I'm two sons, so we, we abut 43 Rockwood Road. And so obviously, I'm very concerned, and I, I did write two certified letters, I actually emailed to Mr. LaRusso too after attending the historical board meeting. The folks in the commission, historical commission, gave me Mr. LaRusso's email address. Haven't heard back from the letters I wrote, haven't heard back from Mr. LaRusso. That's fine, it's his prerogative, but I did want to leave here, leave the meeting with a couple of answers to some of the questions that I had. You know, is there anything either planned or on record regarding the development of this land? And now we're talking about special permits. As time goes on and this permit has lapsed, can LaRusso apply for a new one? And what does that mean for the parcel of land where the abandoned house once stood? At the historical commission, I was told that if they do build another structure on that parcel, that it could only be a single-family home. And so that's, that's one of my other questions. Is your intentions or your client's intentions for that parcel, a single-family residence or something else?
You can choose to answer that question, I'll answer that, until I feel...
My understanding is that he has two years to rebuild, basically, on the footprint. Whether he...
Whether he intends to do that right now, I can't tell you.
I'll just repeat that answer. My understanding is that he has, or the law allows him two years to rebuild that house, which has now been demolished, on the same footprint. Whether he intends to do that, I have no idea. But he is trying to lease the building for office use, which we believe he has the right to do. So beyond that, I really can't tell you. I would assume he would want to build, rebuild a house on that footprint.
And he can only ever build a house on that footprint, right?
Yes, yes, that's my understanding of the law, right. He has two years to do that.
Can I ask a question too? If, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, a nonconforming use, is that somewhat contingent upon a residence being there? In other words, it's a residence first, and then a, then an ancillary use second? No?
No.
Okay.
In this situation, and I, I, as I say, I had that plan dating from 1963, that shows that building being used as a store. And that, as I say, 1963 is the, it predates the zoning enactment, or the enactment of the zoning bylaws in Norfolk. So I believe it's been a nonconforming use, and it continues as a nonconforming use. Does I...
Well, and it would continue as a nonconforming use if, let's say it was in use right now.
Right.
It's used right now, and the house was torn down. In other, in other, I'm just trying to figure out, I was just questioning whether or not you have to have a house there in order for you to run a business out of a residential district.
If it was an accessory use to the house, yes.
Okay.
But we don't consider it to be an accessory use to the house. We consider it to be a nonconforming use on its own.
Okay.
When, when you say a nonconforming use on its own, it's, it's on a residential lot.
Correct.
And it had a nonconforming use, which then was changed to a less detrimental, nonconforming use by special permit.
Correct.
Only a house can be built on that foundation that's there. It can be done by right, if it's the same footprint, and Mr. Bullock will correct me if I'm wrong, and by special permit, it can increase up to 25% greater than the existing footprint by special permit for the zoning board. But the building that sits on that residential lot, it's not a separate lot, it is a part of that home lot, was a nonconforming use, which became less nonconforming use, which then stopped. That special permit use stopped. So whether it's a nonconforming, it was a nonconforming use or not, the use of that building stopped, which therefore ceased the special permit that Mr. Boomer got. And I'll go back to my initial question to you. If Mr. Boomer felt, and he was very educated in real estate law, felt, why would he have required a special permit if he thought he could just go ahead and use that property because it was a nonconforming use, and use that building as a nonconforming use? My assertion is, he knew he couldn't use it as an ancillary building to his property. He knew that, because he wasn't an artisan, he wasn't a carpenter, he wasn't running a home business. He was running an office building, which was in an unallowed use in a residential district back when our bylaws were taken into account. So therefore, he was smart enough to get a special permit, so that he wouldn't be shut down in '72, because he knew he was running an office building. That special permit has ceased to function for at least one year. So I just, I can't understand the argument. And that's what I'm trying to, if you can tell me something I don't know about special permits or that property, I'm all ears.
It was a restaurant use up until 1972. In 1972, this board issued that special permit that you're referring to.
Correct.
And it changed the nonconforming use of a restaurant to a less nonconforming use as an office. Now...
Now, say he didn't change it to a less nonconforming use. You're saying it had nonconforming use status.
Correct.
So what are you, why, why, why do you, why did he get a special permit to change it to a less nonconforming use?
I really don't know why he did it, and I don't think, I think Mr. Bullock had the same question. You can ask him, but I believe he had the same question in his response to Mr. and Mrs. Simpson's request to him to...
You don't think that because our bylaw says that for him to change the use to a lesser nonconforming use, he had to get a special permit? You don't think that's what the law said?
I know that's what the law says, but...
So that's why he did it.
Well...
Because he wasn't running a restaurant, he was running a real estate operation. So he got a special permit.
Well, we have a disagreement, apparently, I just, I don't know what more I can say.
No, I, I, no, I can, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to understand it, it's a, it can get a little complicated. Bob, did Town Council give you anything in writing to explain their, their assertion that the nonconforming use special permit continues? Did they say, did they give us any real good...
Not in writing, no, but, I mean, if you look at F3B, which is nonconforming uses, cessation of a nonconforming use, any non-agricultural, nonconforming use that has been discontinued for two years may not be renewed. That kind of contradicts your one year that is G5.
Yeah. I don't think you want to use that, because we may go back to the early 2000s, and that would not, that would also be, that F3B would also be, could be used here, so we may not want to talk about that, right?
You know, that's all, I've always looked at.
I mean, I'll go to F3A. The Board of Appeals may grant a special permit for any nonconforming use. A special permit. For any nonconforming use to be changed to another specified nonconforming use, not substantially different in character, or more detrimental objective to the neighborhood. So again, why would the zoning board appeal help to issue a special permit? It's a nonconforming use. Why would a special permit be needed? And then we go on to say that if you have a special permit, and you cease to function, your special permit stops. We make, we say those things, so, and that's why I said, I thought you had, I thought you had something when you said it's a nonconforming use. But you're right, it was a nonconforming use. But when it ceased to operate, whether it be two years, based on F3B, or one year, based on G4, it lost its special permit.
Well, we don't know that it was not, that it was abandoned for two years. I'm saying that it wasn't.
It was not used for a period of two years. I can, I can...
Not used.
I can probably tell you, and I, and I won't, I'll probably, I can probably tell you, it wasn't used for two years, only because I've been living here since 1996, and I probably drive that road six times a day. And yes, after Mr. Cahalan left, that property was in disarray. It was nice to see when Mr. Olafland bought it, but that property was in disarray for a number of years. So my guess is, that property was not in use, certainly as an office space for a period of two years.
When did Mr. Cahalan...
But, we can, we could, even if we don't want to say that, I'm sure we can, we can probably get information with regard to that. But it wasn't used for at least a period of one and a half years, which is what G4 says. But I guess my concern is, when you say a nonconforming use just continues without a special permit, our bylaws are based, we base special permits on this, that this is why we give a special permit. We're going to hear tonight about, we're going to give a special permit for parking down at Chire Park, a special permit. Why doesn't he just go and do it?
Does he have a nonconforming use now?
No, but I mean, so what, with a nonconforming, well, we say, if you have a nonconforming use, by special permit. So we don't say, if you have a nonconforming use, you can do whatever you want. We say, may grant a special permit. And that's what the board did in 1972.
That's correct.
And that's, that special permit was no longer being used for the purpose that it was awarded by the Zoning Board of Appeal in 1972. It lost its status.
And does it travel with the applicant?
Hmm?
Does it travel with the applicant, the special permit?
It's a use.
That's...
It's a use.
Right, okay.
And even if it travels with the applicant, Mr. Boomer would have been the applicant.
That's what I'm saying, the applicant has changed.
They say the use, so it's a use, it's a special permit for use. So therefore, it was used as an office building through Mr. Cahalan's period of time.
Right, so the asphalt business would have needed a special permit?
The asphalt business would have needed, the asphalt business, if it continued right after Mr. Cahalan left, would have probably been okay, because it was an office use.
It wasn't strictly an office use.
But it wasn't, it wasn't, there was, there was a period of time that could have amounted to almost 10 years, where it was, the building was not being used. The lights were on, someone might have been cutting the grass, but the use was no longer there.
When do you say that Mr. Cahalan left the property?
Yes?
When do you say Mr. Cahalan left?
When do I think he left the property?
Yeah, when.
I think, and I'll, I'll base this on, he used to own a Jaguar, a black Jaguar, that he tried to sell in the parking lot, and I think that was 1998, and I was going to buy it. And that's the only reason why I remember when he left, because he left about the same time he got rid of the Jaguar, which I think was in 1999. But we can find out, I think he's still, is he still alive, Mr. Cahalan, does anybody know? Yeah, we could, yeah, we can probably find out.
Moved away, right?
He lives in a keep, no?
We can contact him.
No, so we can find out when he actually left the building.
There might be residents that live in the area across the street.
Who could those people be?
Marie's been out waiting patiently to...
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Simpson, do you have a question?
Um...
Could you state your name for the record?
Reece Simpson. A couple of points. Back in 2011, I was working here in the town hall, and we saw activity across the street, and I asked Bob about this activity. I documented what happened in a report. So Chris Delgrasso owned a tree and asphalt finishing company. He moved in, in 2011. In March of 2014, my husband and I were home, and we saw Chris Delgrasso out in the parking lot, moving all of his, his, his equipment, his file cabinets. We went over and we spoke to him. "What's going on, Chris?" He said, "Mr. LaRusso wants to use this building as, for another use." That was in March of 2014. He was out of the, of the building. That building was vacant from March of 2014 to the present. And I documented that in writing as well. Another thing, now that I'm on a roll. The special permit that was granted on October 12, 1972, to Mr. Boomer, in that file, in the ZBA file, along with that decision, was a copy of the 1968 zoning bylaws, which basically stated that you could have a real estate office as a home occupation. That's basically what Mr. Boomer, Mr. Boomer and his mother Florence did. They occupied the home, they ran the business as a real estate office. The 1968 bylaws were included with my application. About nine tenths down, it says, "Real estate agent," or "insurance agent." So why Mr. Boomer obtained a special permit in the first place to change the use to an office, I'm not sure. But back in the 70s, I want to say that we weren't as sophisticated as we are now. The laws were a lot simpler. The zoning bylaws consisted of four pages. So my question is, if the use was changed to a conforming use, Mr. Boomer lived in the house, Mrs. Boomer lived in the house. The use was allowed, and in the special permit decision, it said, it states, "Mr. Boomer does not plan to expand the building area, and since the new use is allowable by law." The 1968 bylaw allowed a real estate agent, a real estate office, as long as you lived in the house. Our zoning bylaws is very clear, once you have a conforming use, you cannot then change it back to a nonconforming use. That is also included in the application. I'm sure there are many occasions where the board has granted special permits, where a special permit really wasn't called for. Section F2B.
No.
"A nonconforming structure or use may be changed to be conforming," which it was back in 1972, as a real estate office, ancillary to the main use in the residential district, which was a residence. "But once changed to be a conforming, to be conforming, it shall not be made nonconforming again." I think there's some confusion as to the structure, which will always remain nonconforming. It's too close to the street. The use has, has become conforming. It was a real estate office. The bylaw clearly states, "A general office space is not allowed in the residential district." Back in 2011, I did ask Bob that. Again, I was working here in the town hall, we met in the hallway, I asked him, just simply, "How can you, how can you allow a general office use? No one was living in the house." It was not used for its primary purpose, which was a residential use. It was then being used as a commercial, commercial use, which is prohibited. To allow, or to say that this continues to be a nonconforming use, is basically granting a use variance, which is not allowed in the town of Norfolk.
I want to know why you hired an attorney, you didn't need one.
I asked the same question two months ago.
I hope you're giving her a refund.
I may have to.
Okay, the hour's getting late, we need to move on. Any other questions from the board, butters, applicant?
Yeah, just sum up very quickly.
Why don't you sum up quickly, please?
Okay, again, as I started off the presentation, this isn't a simple one-answer, yes-or-no question. You actually have a variety of options you can pursue. You have, starting in 1968, was this a home occup, excuse me, was this a real estate office allowed by right accessory to a dwelling? If the answer to that is yes, then it was noncon, it was, became conforming in 1972, and since then, has no nonconforming status. The second question simply is, has this been used continuously since 1972 to date for not, without a two-year break? And if the answer is no, there has been a two-year or more break, then it loses its nonconforming status under your bylaw. The third question you have is, if this is a nonconforming use allowed by special permit, and it falls therefore under the special permit criteria, has this been used consistently since 1972 with not less than one year? So there's actually three different questions that you kind of have to decide. And again, we have heard from Mr. Nannaselli, and I have known him for, well, since I was about seven years old, so I will take his word, when he says to the best of his knowledge that it was used continuously. That said, we have counter testimony, we have actual knowledge, and it's not to the best of his knowledge, is can the person requesting a continuation of a nonconforming use prove that it has been continuously used? So though I completely respect Attorney Nannaselli, the question is not, is to the best of his knowledge, this, has the use continued since 1972 uninterrupted? It is to your satisfaction, have, has the owner proved that there has not been a two-year or a one-year break? And certainly, if you're asking for more information, we would not object to that whatsoever. But again, that's board's discretion and the requester's burden, because quite frankly, neighbors can't provide information, other than, they live there, they've seen it being vacant since 2014, they saw it vacant for multiple years in the early 2000s. I'm certainly willing to give you an affidavit to that, but you have actual imperson testimony, which generally trumps anything in paper. So with that, respectfully, you have three possible questions to ask, and once again, I don't particularly envy you, your task, but we respectfully believe that for any one of those three reasons, this is not a commercial, a grandfathered commercial property, and it should be marketed and developed in accordance with your zoning bylaws. And I would note, you actually have several commercial uses that can be used, daycare is being one of them. Daycares being one of them, the protected amen, uses under the Dover Men, et cetera. And there's a few others that you actually allow by right. But again, we're not debating anything that's allowed by right, or even by special permit, as long as it's in the zoning bylaw as of today, and the proper channels are followed. Thank you very much.
I don't know if either one of the attorneys or Mr. Bullock can answer it. Where F3Bs says two years, and Chief Forrest says one year. Does one trump the other?
Or, you know, can I expand on that just a tad? I had one question about that as well, excuse me. Well, one of them says, so, so one of them says the fact that a special permit lapses. The other one says that you have two years to renew. So is it possible that something can lapse, but you still can renew it after two years? Is it almost like a grace period, saying, "Hey, G, we're gonna give you another six months, and not to renew?" Once it's left, that's it, okay. And there's no grace period after that, that's it, okay. Then there is a conflict.
You can re, you can reapply. You could come back.
Right, but that's independent of, yeah.
So does one trump the other? Do we know?
What, what's section, the second reference?
G4 states one-year use, and F3B states two-year use.
G4?
G4. I'm just asking which one, because my concern is, is, for, we have the testimony of the neighbor, but if we wanted to get test, if we wanted to get, before we close the public hearing, information with regard to whether or not there was anything going on in that building, from the time Mr. Cahalan, Cahalan, yeah, Cahalan left, to 2007, when Mr. Olafland bought it, I would hate to close the public hearing if we feel that is necessary. Again, we have a number of different paths we can take here. I just don't know if we wanna take that one, but I, it would, Mr., the attorney for the current owner has already stated, the building has been empty for a year and a half. So G, if G trumps F, then I don't need that. If it doesn't, then maybe, maybe we wanna continue the public hearing till we get that information. I don't know. We may not need to, if we go back to the bylaw in 1968.
Just two comments. I think that, I didn't consider that provision of subsection G, because F3B is under section F3 of the zoning bylaws, which deals with non-conforming uses. And, and F3A talks about the change. So I, I just assume that the cessation of two years, I assume that that period refers to a non-conforming use, as described in this section F3. I wouldn't have even gone to G, frankly, because that's under a different section of, of the zoning bylaw. So that's...
Well, that's, I say, it's an interest, it's a question, because in theory, as we're saying, this is not a conforming use, so that's why I'm asking if G4 trumps, because we're saying in 68, this was made a conforming use. It was allowed as a real estate office via the bylaw. So that's why I went to G4, because a special permit was issued for a conforming use, and it's lapsed for one year. And that's why I went to G4, as opposed to F3B.
I understand, but the special permit was to allow a less detrimental continuation of a non-conforming use.
You agree with it, in 2000, in 68, it was a conforming use? According to the item number 16 that was presented in the application, in the appeal?
Uh, what is item 16, I'm sorry?
This is what says that the, um, that the permitted, the, uses permitted hereon may include, but not be limited to, the office of physician, dentist, lawyer, architect, engineer, real estate agent, or insured, insurance agent. The studio of an artist, musician, or teacher, or the workroom of a dressmaker, mill, milliner, photographer, or hairdresser. That was in 68, was a, was a permanent use as an accessory building to the residence.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, here, you can, take this. I'm sorry. Hey, don't worry, we're gonna give the members a test after this. This is really good zoning test stuff.
So, um, this is under residential, uh...
Correct.
This is a 1968 bylaw, and it's, under residential, it says, "The use of a portion of a dwelling, or of a building accessory thereto." So this was, originally, this was an accessory use to a residential dwelling.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and it wa, and it was allowed as an accessory use.
So it was a conforming use?
Accessory use doesn't mean that it's, it's a conforming use, no. Uh, it's still a non-conforming use, but it, it was allowed as accessory to a residential building. If you didn't have the residential building, then it, it wouldn't be a, a permitted use. It's only permitted because it's accessory to that residential use.
Yes. But our definition of non-conforming use is very clear. "Any structure which is lawful in existence, or lawfully begun, but not conformed to the most recent effective zoning regulations for the district with such use or structure exists." This was allowed. So non-conforming use is for things that were not allowed.
You reading the definition of non-conforming use?
I am.
All right, any lot, use?
No, non-conforming use or structure. May 9, 2017 bylaw.
Non-conforming use of structure. Well, there's a, there's a definition of non-conforming before, but non-conforming use of structure, okay. "Any use of structure which is lawfully in existence, or lawfully begun, but which does not conform to the most recent effective zoning regulations for the district in which the use or the structure exists." So...
And this use conformed to the zoning regulations for the z, district in which it existed.
Because of the special permit in 1972?
No, by right.
Because it was a, uh, any ancillary building?
To the, to a house, yes.
It's an accessory to the building use, to the residential use.
Yes.
That's, that's why it was permitted.
Correct.
But that doesn't mean it lost its non-conformity.
It was a conforming use.
And it's, it's an accessory use, not necessarily a conforming use. It conformed to that provision, allowing it as an accessory to a residential use.
We can agree to disagree on that.
Now...
Okay.
Well, I'm not saying it, it was, that's the point. I'm not saying that it was a, a, a conforming use at that point. The only other point I was gonna make, I said I had two points. If, if we wanna hear from Mr. LaRusso himself regarding the issue of when his tenants moved out, then we can do that, but we'll need to continue the hearing, that's all. I have no problem with doing that.
Well, we've got conflicting evidence and testimony. We need some documentation. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna have to have some proof, because we've got conflicting testimony on that topic.
Was the power of it turned off to the building back, I'm talking not in the last two years, but earlier?
Say again?
Was the power of it turned off? Does anybody know?
Can Mr. LaRusso provide us some documentation that shows occupancy? Specific dates, tenants, canceled checks, all that sort of information?
I, he told me, and I told you exactly what he told me. I assume he would be willing to sign an affidavit to that effect, sure. And we could possibly get in touch with those tenants, if they're still in the area. I don't know either one of those gentlemen. But we could possibly try and get in touch with them, and see if they will confirm what he is saying.
You're gonna have to provide us some, some information, documentation to...
I, I'm happy to do that, or at least, if, if, if it doesn't exist, then you'll know about it, and I'll tell you that, but...
All right, that'll solve the problem, I think. If it doesn't exist, it wasn't occupied. Okay, thank you.
So, are we gonna, what's your pleasure, as far as, do you wanna close the hearing now? Do you wanna make a decision, or do you wanna continue it and see that we can get some... Additional testimony, whether written or oral?
And I think Mr. Boomer's still alive, isn't he, I think?
No.
No, Mr. Boomer's passed away?
He has passed away, yes.
If your, your pleasure is to continue?
Yes, I think we should.
January 3rd is gonna be a very long night. What do we have on January 3rd? Again, we have, uh, 9 Fruit Street, now we have 144 Seacombe Street?
And Abbeville.
Well, if, if Abbeville is gonna be continued until January 3rd, I prefer to do it two weeks after that.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Will be out of the country?
Will be out of the country.
Till? So what is our February schedule?
Or January 10th?
And he, what I'm willing to do, in the meantime, if we continue until February, I'm just gonna tell Mr. LaRusso, and I know he'll do it, that he's not to rent the property until we get this squared away. And I, I'll tell the real estate agent, if he ever returns my calls, I'll tell him the same thing tomorrow.
That would be advisable, thank you.
February 7th is the first Wednesday.
Are all attorneys available on February 7th?
So when will you be?
Hattori will be here, she can do far better than any attorney.
Mr. Mackey's, or Soshi will be here, so... If that's okay with him, then it's okay with me.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we continue the public hearing until February 7th, at 7:00 PM, for the appeal hearing of Marie M. Rose Simpson, with regard to the building commissioners enforcement, with regard to 43 Rockwood Road, map 14, block 49, lot 7, in the R1 district.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay.
This is a good one, though. This is a real education in zoning bylaw.
It's interesting.
It's a good one.
Yeah, the, the big questions I have is, what's the difference between these two sections in the bylaw?
Either way...
You know what, I'm not sure about that, 'cause he said that, does a special permit go, does, does the use continue after different subsequent owners?
Yes, as long as the use is the same. So when it went from Cahalan, from Boomer to Cahalan, the use continued as a, as a real estate operator? Yes. Does the use continue, yes.
So, so, so...
It's only when it stopped functioning as a real estate office, that, that special permit.
So, so in one sense... I hope this next hearing's easy. It does run with the land, presuming of the use. It just doesn't really bother the... All right, gentlemen, we're gonna have to wrap this up. We're keeping these folks waiting. They were supposed to be here 8 o'clock. Thank you very much for your hard work on this, okay. You wanna read?
No!
Or you. Notice a public hearing.
I'll do it.
You wanna do it?
What is it? It's a...
You're gonna read it?
Don't think you're better than I am. You all right?
Choked up, okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's like to, uh, address a public hearing in accordance with chapter 40, Massachusetts laws, and if any amendments are due, a public hearing, in room 124 in the municipal building, here, Wednesday, December 6, 2017, at 10:00 PM, for Trident Environmental Group, for a special permit pursuit of MGL 40A. Section 9 is amended in section J 7A 2B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, to allow outdoor storage of more than three commercial vehicles limited to the rear yard. Property is located at 13 Shire Drive, assesses map 18, block 69, lot 8, in the C1 zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Weeder. Okay, for the applicant?
Good evening, good night, at this point. My name's Dan Campbell, Level Design Group, on behalf of the applicant, Trident Environmental. This property is currently occupied by CEI Construction. CEI has the same special permit that we are requesting this evening. Our client, Trident Environmental, intends to purchase the building and occupy it. We did put in our special permit application the types of commercial vehicles that they plan to have on the, on the property. And as promised, I'm gonna try and make it as, as fast as possible, so I'm gonna leave it up to questions from the, the board at this point.
So, to get straight, the previous business had this same special permit that you're requesting?
Correct.
And the previous business was what type of business?
They were a concrete contractor. So the previous special permit was granted, case number 200604. They were a concrete contractor, so they had significant vehicles on the property as well. The vehicles that our client has are, are not of the same ilk, so to speak. The reason I included the pictures is because, as an environmental company, they have to keep their trucks fairly clean, well-painted and maintained. And the reason they have to do that is because, as they go to these properties, they can't be dragging something from, from property to property.
So your contention is that they're, they're, they're actually less objectionable than what is there now?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, and then my question back to the board, is we were just talking, that special permit that was granted, is that special permit for that business?
Was it a use permit?
Or was it a use permit? 'Cause if it's a use permit, then they don't even have to apply for a special permit? Based on the discussion that we had over the last hour and 40 minutes?
We, we did, we did come and, and had a conversation with the, the building inspector out of, regardless of what it is, out of an abundance of caution. We'd like the same special permit granted. That way Trident can, can go safely into their purchase of the property, and know that they, they're able to operate without any further legal opinions on the matter.
Okay. Questions?
Same lighting, same, there won't be any change in the lighting of the bill, of the facility?
The only changes proposed on the property are replacement of the slats, the privacy slats and the fence, that are currently missing or damaged. And the plan that I submitted, there's one section of curbing that was damaged by the previous owner, that causes a detriment to the drainage. That section of curbing has to be replaced as well.
No lighting?
Correct, no lighting, no parking, no other changes to the overall site as a whole.
No noise changes, is these diesel, gasoline vehicles, electric vehicles?
There are diesel vehicles.
Similar to what was?
Similar to what's there. There will be, inside of the facility itself is going to be more storage-based, rather than more construction-based, but essentially, it is the same style of use.
Okay. Are there any butters here, questions, concerns? Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion to close the hearing at 10:05, for the Trident Environmental Group, for the special permit, with regard to section 40, chapter 40, section 9, is amended by J 7A 2B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, to allow the storage of three or more commercial vehicles limited to the rear yard. Property located at 13 Shire Drive.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, Mr. Weeder, I have a question. I wanna deliberate this tonight, and get this off our docket, because if we don't do it tonight, it won't, it'll get pushed off until, uh, summer of 2019. What, what do we have next? AA Soshi, um, do you wanna do that hearing? Are you th, doing this, are they here?
No, yeah, they're...
They're out there, okay, so, you wanna deliberate this, after this next hearing? Or do it, deliberate this now, get it done?
We can, we can deliberate now, if you'd like.
Right now. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna deliberate this right now.
No, they can, you can hold up, we'll do it, but we're gonna give them a, give us a couple minutes. Amy, do you have the worksheet for this, for this, this one, Trident? Special permit worksheet? I don't know if you have it, do you have it handy? The special, do you have it with you, the special permit worksheet?
So I have both.
I'll make it, I'll make it go quick. Previous one.
That is the previous one.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Do you have it?
Chris, I was thinking the same thing.
Amy's got it, let's use Amy's copy.
You have, okay, yeah. Amy, if you can...
Okay, well said, thank you. All right, listen, let's do some findings of fact. The applicant, Trident Environmental Group, wishes to purchase the property from CEI Construction, is that what they're calling it?
CEI Construction, yep. Plan to make repairs to the exterior of the building.
There's a curbing into a slat and fence? Curbing and the fencing.
They do not plan to change the lighting, no change to lighting?
Change the lighting. Same vehicles? Similar vehicles to the previous SP. And we have no, well, this isn't testimony taken tonight... And we have no, well, this isn't testimony taken tonight, but we did check with CONCOM. CONCOM has no concerns. We might want to have that in.
Realized by special permit, this action?
Yep.
In this district?
Okay. All right, so let's go through the, quickly go through the worksheet. The use must be in harmony with a general purpose and intent of the bylaw. The zoning bylaw, as currently enacted, allows the storage of commercial vehicles in excess of three in this zone with a special permit. The use, number two, the use is in an inappropriate location, is not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. The C1 zone and this property specifically were designed for this type of use, and this property currently holds a special permit for the use under the current owner. The abutting residential should not be significantly impacted by this use. Number three, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. There is no modification of the proposed facilities for this use. Number four, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts. There is no proposed modification of exterior lighting. We did capture that from the existing conditions in reference to this application. Number five, the proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. The Shire Industrial Park was designed to facilitate the access of large commercial vehicles. Number six, a proper site plan has been filed with the planning board. The site plan, as previously approved, is not proposed to be modified. And number seven, the use and/or purpose is consistent with the 1992 master plan and, as most recently updated, this is in, the use is consistent with the 2007 master plan for commercial uses in the C1 zone. All right, so we've got all that.
And no residents or businesses were in objection to it, so that was finding of fact?
No finding of fact, no others.
And we will issue the same conditions that was issued under the prior special permit with regard to lighting, the exterior, the fencing, which obviously you're going to be repairing and keeping the same it was, and the road will be the same egress and entrance as prior, previous.
All right, okay, Amy?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the special permit to Trident Environmental Group with pursuant of MGL chapter 40, section 9, and J 7A 2B of our Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow for the outdoor storage of more than three commercial vehicles limited to the rear yard. Property is located at 13 Shire Drive, assesses map 18, block 69, lot 8, in the R3, C1 zoning district. This is a motion to grant a special permit.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry, it's late. Okay, so Devin?
Yes to grant.
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 Okay. Thank you for having me.
You can have that back.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry you guys had to wait so long.
Of course, they all went like that, huh? This is right.
I told you I'd give you five minutes.
Good job, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good time. Have a special. Good luck.
I know, you know. I don't know, we're not doing Abbeville now, are we?
But now.
Rick, where's that? Were we here for Abbeville, Rick?
No, Abbeville's long enough, please.
Rick, make this one easy, please.
Denied.
Denied. All right, so Mr. Weider will read the notice of public hearing.
Once Mr. Weider finds the notice.
Right here, right here.
I got it, I got it. Who's that guy? Who's that?
Mr. Chairman, notice of public hearing pursuant of chapter 48 of Massachusetts general laws and amendments there, too, that a public hearing will be held, room 124 of the Norfolk Municipal Building, Wednesday, December 6, at 10:10 PM for the following application, AA Sochi LLC, for a special permit pursuant of chapter 40, section 9, is amended in F7E of the Norfolk zoning bylaw to allow parking in the front yard. The properties are located at 1618 Sharon Ave, assesses map 18, block 69, lots 41-15 and 16, in the C1 zoning district.
Mr. Goodrow?
Good evening, Rick Goodrow with United Consultants. Mr. Chairman and board members, here we have a colored-up plan, just to kind of go through some of the history of this site and its development. Approximately seven years ago, the applicant had purchased this property, lot 12, Shire Industrial Park, and developed the building, parking lot, outdoor storage area. At that time, he obtained two special permits from this board for front yard parking and the use of the property as a contractor's headquarters. Earlier this year, we came to the board and the planning board for a site plan approval to allow for the construction of this dark brown driveway to provide access for a parking lot, which has basically been flipped in that the parking spaces were originally proposed to be back here and now are proposed to be here, and an outdoor storage area through a special permit process with the planning board. So the dark brown, the gray and the orange areas here were permitted by the planning board and this board earlier this year. So now what the applicant is proposing is to construct the building, shown here in the purple color, the additional parking, which would include the front yard parking area here, as well as some parking to the side of the building and access to some overhead doors for the building. So we have filed for that special permit. We are currently before the planning board. They're conducting a peer review for the stormwater, septic, et cetera. So that's a little bit of the overview of the project. This project was also granted a special permit by this board earlier this year for this property to be used as a contractor's headquarters, as well as parking of more than three commercial vehicles. So that's already in place. So what we're basically asking for is to allow 16 parking spaces and an additional, I believe, additional two.
Let me get my numbers here.
Four, excuse me, 14 parking spaces, two handicap parking spaces, for a total of 16 parking spaces to be constructed in front of the building here. That actually mimics what's been constructed over here, which is 16 spaces, two of which are handicap and 14 of which are conventional parking spaces.
And the vehicles that will be in those parking spaces will they be construction vehicles or?
No, those will be employees' vehicles, cars. A pickup truck may be there, but no large truck vehicles. Those will be.
They'll be cement mixers, right?
Side yard and in the building itself. And the board can certainly condition that no commercial vehicles over, say, a one-ton pickup truck can be parked in front. I mean, they do have pickup trucks for their construction business, so they would like to be able to park them there. You know, a dump truck, anything of that size, no.
That's my only concern.
Nope, and we'd be amenable to a condition of that.
And this is consistent with lot 12 that's existing today?
That's correct.
What are the, are there any other lots developed up there similar? Is lot 10 developed or is that lot 10 over there?
Lot 10 is the town's police and fire dispatch center.
That's it, okay.
That's 10. So 10 is unique in that the building sits here, the road kind of wraps around and then curves, and the parking is proposed there. Is it forward of the building or not? I haven't seen the site plan to know. Across the street is the island light and power building. That's basically the combining of four lots, and all of the parking is between the building and the street on that property because of the configuration. There really is no rear yard. It goes from street to street. So it is consistent with what's been up there. We've permitted this front yard parking for WFM Enterprises on some other lots up there a couple of years ago. That was never developed for the truck transport business, if the board members may recall. We got the special permit, but they never constructed it. He's actually over in Foxborough now, but.
Questions from the board?
And this special permit is just for front yard parking?
That's correct.
So it doesn't have anything to do with lighting? Well, what about lighting for the front yard parking?
We do have lighting proposed. Amy, if you could go to the other. There is a photometric plan that was included in the plan set. There'll be some building.
On your drive?
On the, yes.
On the flat drive?
Yes, the site plan, which I thought you had, but I sent you so many plans.
Oh, I'm sure I have.
Sure, I would be.
Just keep a track of what you're getting, Amy.
Second to the last.
Yeah, it is.
Actually, if you go to page two.
Oops, sorry.
This shows you the combination of the two lots, and you can see the front yard parking that exists on lot 12. It's basically taking this building, parking lot and driveway and mirroring it on the abutting lot. And, yes.
The lighting, you know, is it such that it's not going to extend over to the abutters' properties? Is it the low, what do you call it, the?
Yeah, the poles, if you go to.
Seal, okay.
Page, second to the last page, I believe it is, there's a photometric lighting plan that the applicant's consultant. And one more, do you have one more?
Mine. Try seven.
Oh, you know what? I don't know if I included the lighting. No, it would have been.
What would it be in?
Would be in the one I emailed.
All right, I have that.
I believe it's in that one. We are asking for relief from the height, from 15-foot pole amount height of the lights to 20. And we did ask for some, I believe, some minimal overspill of the half a candle foot allowance to around one candle foot, just up at the street level.
You asked for that of the planning board?
Of the planning board.
Anyway, right, gotcha.
Correct. But everything else, the five, maximum five-foot candles was met. It's just at the entrance area by the front driveway, which is, there's going to be street lights in the street itself as well that that's going to light up the street. So we do have a little light spillage, which we could shield if the planning board so desires. And we did ask for relief to have building-mounted lights. They prefer to have the outside of the parking lot lit in, but we asked for some building-mounted lights, which we've done, and they've given us permission to do that, based on the photometrics.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for AA Sochi at 10:15 PM for the special permit pursuant of MGL chapter 40, section 9, and section F7E of the Norfolk zoning bylaw to allow front parking, lot located 16-18 Sharon Ave, assesses map 18, block 69, lot 41-15 and 16, in the C1 zoning district.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's do some finding of facts, get this one done. ZBA has already granted a SP for use as a contractor's headquarters. Planning board is in the process of reviewing the new access road.
Stormwater and those things.
Are they referring to it as a subdivision? Not really, it's not really, the planning board, what are they reviewing it as? Just the access road or how are they labeling it?
It's a site plan approval.
Site plan approval, yes, okay.
And there's special permits requested from the planning board, stormwater permit.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Requests for 16 parking spaces, 14 conventional, two handicapped.
The adjoining lot has a front parking that has been approved through special permit, correct?
Lot 12 has already been granted a special permit for front parking.
Front parking, that should be in there?
Yep.
Okay. Do it for one, we do it for the other, right?
That's good, yeah. Photometric plan, did we review that or did they find that?
They didn't find it, but the planning board is actually currently reviewing that.
They're reviewing, okay.
But we can note that the photometric plan is being reviewed, but the planning board is part of their plan.
Okay. Any other findings of fact?
Again, it's consistent with the.
The use in harmony of the.
With the master plan, it's consistent with the zoning bylaw for this district.
Okay.
Do we have any question? We have the questionnaire to go over, right?
Yeah, I'm looking for that now.
I don't have it. Rick, do you have your, the application, the worksheet?
The worksheet.
Andy or Amy, do you have it?
I've got it, I got it right here.
You have it right there?
I got it.
My guys.
Okay. The use must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Norfolk bylaw section F7E allows parking in the front yard if authorized by SP. Number two, the use is in an appropriate location. Location is a commercial district, C1. Number three, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation of the proposed use. The proposed layout of the site pavement shall provide a single entrance from the street and vehicle access aisles within the proposed site. Number four, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts. Half the proposed parking spaces to be located in the front yard would face the building away from the street, right of way and other neighboring properties. Number five, the proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion. The proposed use does not include a retail component. The number of vehicles expected to enter and leave the site on a daily basis is low. Number six, a proper site plan has been filed with the planning board, yes. And number seven, the use and/or purpose is consistent with the 92 master plan. The use of the site is as a contractor's yard with parking and associated utilities is allowed in the zoning district.
Okay.
And again, we condition it the same way. We conditioned the prior one, and probably with a limit on maybe the truck size of 11,000 pounds in the front yard, just over.
Does that weigh sound right, Rick?
11,000 pounds.
You questioning?
Well, I just.
You questioning?
I'm not for the record.
I know. Smart man.
He's happy with one time. He gets away five.
Well, a one.
It's okay, it's okay.
A one-ton G V W of 10,000 pounds.
Rick knows that, I know that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special permit for AA Sochi LLC at 10:20 PM pursuant of MGL chapter 40, section 9, as amended in F7E of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to grant a special permit to allow parking in the front yard at 16 and 18 Sharon Ave, assesses map 18, block 69, lot 41-15 and 16, in the C1 zoning district.
Your opinion?
I second the motion.
All right, any just further discussion? Let's vote.
Yes to grant.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Don't you wish all your projects were this easy?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Don't you wish all your projects were this easy?